Before we commence our agenda, again, we are reminding people that we are streaming on YouTube and we also have the option of joining as an attendee on Zoom. The link for that can be found on our town website under Select Board and under the meeting agenda for today, January 18th. Please feel free to click on that, you'll become as attendee. As an attendee, please utilize the two principal functions if you want to use or if you have a question, a Q and A, use the Q and A function, we'll try to get to all the questions if possible. Alternatively, if you'd like to speak during the meeting, just please raise your hand. That would give us the same options that our people that are sitting here have, that's why we do it that way. So with that introduction, I'd like to start into our agenda and ask, item one, is there any public input on a non-agenda item? Mr. Ray, please. And Ray, as I said, please, three minutes, and identify yourself to the, to the audience, please.
Okay, my, uh, my name is Ray Williamson, I'm a Camden resident and a business owner in town for 37 years. On October 5th, I ran into the harbor master, Steve Pixley, in the landing approximately 2:00 PM. We had a conversation regarding the Sally. His characterization of that discussion at the Select Board meeting that later that evening was both inaccurate and misleading. During our brief conversation, he stated that an inner harbor float was being surrendered and that he was getting ready to reassign it. I am number 21 on the waiting list of 53, however, my application was for a commercial float. I believe I am at the top of that list and have been for some time. Steve has made it clear on several occasions that it is within his authority as manager of the harbor to decide if a float will be reassigned for commercial or private use. Just like every other time he made such an announcement to me, I asked if that meant he was offering it to me. He said no, because I wasn't going to need it. He made it clear that the decision to revoke my privilege to operate the Sally had been made, and he agreed with it. He decided, decided by whom, I thought? I was not aware that this had been brought before the Select Board in a public meeting as is required by the ordinance, and of course it hadn't. As manager of the harbor, I would expect he would have informed me that the recommendation to revoke my privilege was about to be brought before the Select Board that very evening, but he didn't. Why complicate the plan to persuade the Select Board in this matter with my presence? Clearly, I would have, I would have had a different opinion, and my public comments on the matter were not even heard. At the Select Board meeting that evening, Matt Siegel, uh, asked, have the owners and operators been in contact with the town about where they stand with this? The harbor master's misdirected response was, I spoke with Ray today, and I told him, heads up, you're not going to be running that boat next year. This did not answer his question. Matt again asked to return to the conversation about the owner a second time. Does the owner have an expectation of running the, of business next season? Has anybody been in contact, not so much as you don't have that option, as does the operator or business owner have an expectation? Again, the harbor master sidestepped the question, saying, I spoke with him today, and further mischaracterized my response by saying, I just hemmed and hawed, indicating that I had no opinion or desire to present one on this matter. We have discussed my intentions on many, on many occasions, and I am baffled as to how he could have been, how they could have been misunderstood. At this point, the town manager said perhaps she could flush things out a bit. She said, when the license agreements were renewed in 2020, there was, for lack of a better term, a use it or lose it provision for just this situation. I'm sure that this was her recollection of the agreement, but it certainly was not mine. I have reviewed the commercial passenger license agreement dated 11/12/2020, and there is no use, use it or lose it provision of, or anything that can be interpreted as such. I have included the full agreement in the package presented to you. Furthermore, I would like to bring to your attention to paragraph 19 in the agreement, which states, "Any notice permitted or required to be served on a licensee under the terms of this agreement may be served by certified mail, postage paid, return receipt requested, and mailed to Raymond Williamson, Mainland Gemmer Cruises, P.O., Box 617, Camden, Maine." It certainly seems to me that after 37 years of partnership with the town, operating my business from Camden Harbor, some sort of heads up would have been appropriate in order that I may have had the opportunity to speak for myself in public comment regarding the proposed suspension of my license agreement. One more item I would like to address is the timeless, timeliness of this request. I know that a motion to reconsider a prior action must be made in a timely manner. It has been with considerable frustration that I have made repeated attempts to bring this matter before the board. The following is an outline of my efforts. On October 19th, I spoke as a non-agenda item of my concerns and requested that it be put on the agenda to give me the opportunity for public comment. I waited for the early November meeting, but it was not on the agenda. I called the chairman and asked what I needed to do, and his response was that he wasn't at the original meeting, I should put my request in writing and send it to him, which I did. He said he would discuss it with Audra. In our next conversation, he suggested that I reach out to Sophie, as she is the harbor liaison. He said I could reach out to other Select Board members if I wish. I did speak to Sophie, and I wrote letters to all of the Select Board members, receiving various recommendations on how to proceed. I wrote a letter to the town manager and copied all board members of my request. Unfamiliar with protocols, I, I did all I could to expedite the matter. I was told this weekend to come to tonight's meeting and again speak as a non-agenda item, stating that my reasons why I think this decision should be revisited. I was also told to bring in person a written request to the meeting. I understand that running a harbor has its challenges and that there is pressure from all sides to have their wishes met. I only want what is right for the harbor, and I do, do not think what happened was right. According to protocol, I am respectfully requesting that some member who voted in the majority on this action make a motion to reconsider that action in order that my concerns may be addressed.
Thank you, Ray. This is all in, in the works and consideration will be given to your request.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you, good to see you again.
I'd like to, I'd like to say that, I'd like to request that this be put on the agenda for the next meeting, so then we can make a motion to re-figure, because I was one of the people at that meeting.
Thank you, Mark. Thank you, thank you, Ray.
Okay, thank you very much.
It is, it's an open item, we understand that.
Excuse me?
We understand your request, it's still open, we have to get back to you.
Yeah.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ray.
Has there any other public comments from any, on non-agenda items tonight? I'm not seeing any hands or raised hands. Allison?
So, I guess, I guess this is a process question, but, um, I think it's difficult to sometimes give advice about how to handle certain situations, and I, I mean, I, I personally find a lot of this compelling, um, and did feel marginally, um, I, I hoped when we had voted before that it was one of those things where it was like, oh, this is all gonna be okay. I know Steve to be a, generally speaking, a sort of fierce advocate for the wind jammers, and if anything airs on the side of, I, I get complaints about him being too much of an advocate for the wind jammers, and I don't want to go into the details of that, and I don't know with all the information how I would ultimately vote, but I am left with the sense that that decision was made, or at least by me, without sort of complete information, and
Understood, Allison.
I don't know what the
I think to the process question, you ask a good one, and just so everybody knows.
I don't, I don't like having somebody have to come here with a, with right, you know, when we all, there should be a way for us to kind of check in with each other to figure out, should this be an agenda item?
The first, the first step was to, and I told you, Ray suggested I ask Sophie to take a look into this whole matter so she could recommend that we are not to bring it to the board for, because as an agenda item, of course, if two of, I believe there were four people that night.
Was it an agenda item for the harbor committee, then?
No, no. Agenda item, potential agenda item for the Select Board. And, and because we, and I even discussed it with Mark briefly at one of our meetings, and we, and, but the process is very simple, we, if Sophie or among others recommend we bring it back to Select Board as an agenda item, we will do that. And during an agenda item, though, two, and I've kind of got to recuse myself a little bit, because I wasn't at that meeting, so I don't have the benefit of being there, but that's
I don't know if there was anything special about being at that meeting, but
But there were four people that voted for it, I believe it was for zero. And, and if two of them, because it's four, if two of those four, four people agree that it should be readdressed, it can be readdressed at that meeting. And that's what's been in process, and that's why I informed
It's a little more complicated than that, but I don't want to, I don't think we should go into it now.
We're not gonna, that's why I mean, there's, there are activities going on, including discussions with the town attorney and other things that we need to get through before we can finally to your point, Mark, and to bring it to the, to an agenda item, to, to the process we just talked about. And that's what we're gonna do, that's what we've been
Seems like it's taking for something relatively simple.
Yeah, once we, once we voted, it's not, I mean, that, that's the issue, right?
It, it isn't that simple. Um, it's, it's, we're doing the homework, and we need, nothing happens overnight, so, you know, that's what we're gonna do. And Ray, we, as I said, we have your request, it's been taken seriously, it's not been tabled or shelled or anything, I know it's frustrating, it's been a long time for you, but we are gonna get to it.
At some point, we need an understanding of what these really super complicated legal issues are, because it sounds a little bit like
Well, we will do that, but we're not gonna do it at a, at a non-agenda item, but yes, you're absolutely right.
But before, maybe before you tell somebody to come to a meeting and state their case within writing, it would be good for
I didn't tell you, I don't, I don't, who told Ray to come to this meeting as a non-agenda item? I don't recall saying that, but if I did, I don't, yeah, I, I, okay, so
No, it was just a suggestion.
That's fine, we don't need to get to names, that, that's fine, that's, non-agenda items are free to the public, and you had your right to come here and speak, Ray, and I'm glad you did. But, but I just want to make it clear that, that's what occurs. So we are, we are getting, we are involved in a review, yes, it is complicated, we're gonna get through it very quickly and make a recommendation to the board about agenda items.
I thought it was, I was understanding that you had told him to do this, and I was thinking, gosh, that just seems like such a terrible
I love talking to Ray, but I don't get, it's a doing very often, right, Ray?
Because my general sense is that this is an issue that isn't, we're, we're not trying to ignore this, and so
No, absolutely not.
Nobody's saying it's been ignored, Allison.
I'm not saying that, I was, I was
So nobody, nobody's ignoring it?
But there is a process.
But there is a process, and we have to go, we have to use the process
Yes.
By the book, just to
That's fine, I thought
Because, because, because in my opinion, I'm a little bit in the same situation you are, Allison, that there's some information that we didn't have at the time, and that I feel that Ray's due process has not been respected. So it's very important now that we do everything by the book, and that we, we, we outline the next steps correctly.
With all the information at hand, from all, from all aspects, we're doing, trying to do a thorough job, Ray, and I, again, apologize, it's taken too long, but we need to move on for the rest of our agenda. Thanks for coming again, we'll be in touch.
Thanks, Ray.
Thank you, Ray.
And before we clap?
Matt?
Mr. Chair, can you hear me at the table?
I can hear you very well, Matt, go ahead.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Chair, so, again, there's a point of order, the process, someone was asking about, uh, Robert's rules, um, it would not be a point a motion to be considered, that would had to have happened during the meeting or shortly thereafter, um, and there are limitations on that, as Ray had mentioned in terms of time. To Mark's point, in terms of a motion, uh, and to put it in order, it would be a motion to rescind. And again, this motion to rescind would not have the same timetable, it would allow us, again, to put it up to a future agenda. So officially, Mr. Chair, it would be a motion to rescind with amendment to put on the agenda. Um, we don't need to vote on that at this time, but again, Mark, your motion, if you want put it, you would be in a position to do that now, a motion to rescind with amendment to put on agenda, could be something that could be voted on now, without being out of order. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Sure, thank you. I was gonna suggest that's all well put, but we don't have all the information yet, and we're gonna, we should really do our homework to do it right, so we don't wind up doing this a third time.
Yep.
Okay? So that's fundamentally where it's at, but you're absolutely right in your points of order. Mr. Siegel, thank you. Onto our second agenda item.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Um, approval of board minutes for January 11th, January, January 11th, 2022. Marco?
Um, all looks good to me, except the one point, authorization to spend up to $55,000 for the Snowball Reserve Fund, uh, was motioned by Sophie and seconded by Sophie, according to the minutes here.
She's powerful.
We are very powerful.
Yeah, I thought, wow, you're good at that, um, so
What do we need to
Matt has a, just is raising his hand, just so you know, and I don't know if you can see that, or if you want me to point that out to you.
Matt, you're raising your hand about minutes?
Uh, yes, sir.
Go ahead, Matt.
So, um, at time, thank you, uh, to revise the minutes of January 11th to reflect the Select Board week being after executive session?
Yes.
Uh, and at which time a motion was put forth to the floor to send to the town manager of Camden, a consent agreement, man, Dan Gabriel?
Yes.
Um, recall the motion, again, correct me if I'm mistaken, uh, was made by Robert Kaufman, Chair, and seconded by Sophie Ramona, and in terms of the minutes, the motion passed three to two in
Yeah, Matt, I, I had that too, but there's a little subtle addition to that, and that is, I, and I, it's my bad, I didn't get it to the writer, we came out of executive session at 8:50, that needs to be specified, and to the rest of your, your statement is correct. So that needs to be corrected, I agree. Um, other than that, and
How do we correct, how do we correct this motion that I, that I both, I moved and and seconded?
Honestly, I don't remember who moved the second.
Matt's in the notes, I, I think we made
I can have, we can just have her go back over the video and check on who, who made the motion first and second, that needs to be corrected, and to Matt's point and mine about the coming out of executive session with a, with a, with a vote on a matter has to be in there also, and I can, what I can do, Audra, is I can write that piece up and give it to, uh, Caitlin, and she can do that part, I, I can't help with the first and the second, because I don't remember. But we'll correct it, thank you, Matt. Um, with that, those two changes, do I have a motion? Anything else, Matt?
Allison.
Allison, please.
Sorry, um, uh, yes, I'm speaking of that same motion, um, I just continue to feel that, so it says, Ramona, motion to authorize up to $55,000 from the Snowball General Fund Reserve Account.
Right.
And I'd like to clarify that it's the General Funds
Absolutely.
Snowball Reserve Account.
Absolutely.
So I feel that, like, the hierarchy of the way that's stated should be, if you put snowball first?
Yeah.
Then it makes it the, like, as if the snowball budget has a General Fund Reserve Account in it. It should be General Funds, Snowball Reserve Account.
So let me write that down to
I, I seem to think I may have made the original motion.
Yeah.
I remember we talked a lot about that thing.
You usually make the motion
Yeah, that's, so, and especially with snowball stuff, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, so, so reflect, Mark, as, uh, motion, Sophie second, it should read General Funds, Snowball, uh, Reserve, and then the third piece would be adjourning at, uh, executive session at 8:50, and, um, and voting on the, um, consent agreement to be signed by the town attorney for the issue with Mr. Gallagher, and that was voted on, and it was passed three to two. Um, I think that covers the changes. With that, do I have a motion to accept?
Uh, make a, I make a motion.
Sophie, do you have anything else?
So, I'm sorry, I thought the, the motion was not to sign the consent agreement, but to authorize
That's what I said, to authorize Audra to
Audra to
Audra to sign on behalf of the town, the consent agreement that had been signed by Mr. Gallagher.
I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Thank you.
All right, I'll write that up, just so we don't get confused. Matt, just FYI, you're breaking up quite a bit, but I generally get the voice, but the audio, or the video's kind of bad, just FYI. Okay, with that, do I have a motion?
No, I know, we're having, um, we're having internet, internet problems over here, but just so you know.
Well, we'll, we'll address it with Deborah Hall later. Um, anyway, uh, she's, she's here, Matt, as you can probably see. Um, onward to
You guys, I'm gonna sign out for one second, and I will sign back in, so
All right, go ahead, go ahead.
I'm accused, as in Robert's role, so I'm gonna take a point of accuse, and I will try and be back in a moment.
All right, all right. With that, I think we can move to, move to accept these minutes with those comments, those three.
I'll make a motion that we approve the board minutes of January 11th, 2022, with the noted changes.
I second.
Motion made and second, and more discussion. All of those in favor? Four zero, noting that Matt was, uh, passed, noting that Matt did not vote because he's rebooting his computer, uh, which is fine. Okay, um, with that, we're gonna move on to the item three, which is, we have a number of Vittler lodging licenses, the first of which is the Fresh at One Bayview Landing for a Vittler license only. Board?
Um, can I, there's a comment, a question, that, um, I think is relevant here, so the question is, um, from Michelle, Michelle, if you could
Well, why don't we address that when we get to that item, which is Free Street?
Okay.
Okay? Yeah, I see the question, too.
This question's regarding agenda, all right.
All right, well, it's the item, it would be item number three C. But right now, let's go, let's go through these one at a time, the Fresh at One Bayview Landing, Vittler license only.
I'll make, I'll make a motion, we approve the Vittler license, which I cannot pronounce well. I define anybody
Victorler.
It's Vittler, it's Vittler.
It's Vittler.
It's Victor. It's a French word.
It is.
I know, but we take French words and really screw with them, you know.
I don't know.
Um, so, uh, we, we approve the, uh, Vittler, Vittler license for Fresh, the Fresh at One Bayview Landing.
Motion made and second, uh, any discussion? Not hearing Allison's favor?
Is it Fresh and Co., it's Fresh and Co., right?
Sorry?
It's Fresh and Co.
That's correct, that's correct. All those in favor? Four zero, um, again, again
I talk in a language a lot, too, so
Matt is temporarily
I want to revisit the Vittler
Four zero vote, item two, uh, be, Boa at 31 Elm Street, Vittler only.
Oh, so ignore my note, because I think five minutes after Janice revised the packet and posted the, um, the, yes, so we have everything, and they're all ready to go.
And it's all proper, and
Mm-hmm, they've had their inspections, and
Yeah, I'll make a motion, we approve the Vittler license for Boa, B-O-W-A, at 31 Elm Street.
I second.
Motion made and seconded, any comments, discussion, not hearing, seeing any, all those in favor? Or is there items C, which is the Free Street Inn at 12 Free Street, for which we do have a question, and the question is regarding this item, that this looks like a new lodging license. Free Street Inn doesn't currently exist, from my understanding, the property was staff housing for Hartstone, it was conveyed, but the purchase of Hartstone is the town now considering new lodging license, and how does that affect lodging licenses that are currently restricted in addition, in adding more rooms to their businesses?
Seems like a general information
Well, well, that's, I don't know, um, I, I don't
Yeah, I don't know the answer to it.
I don't know, in, in the packet, um, how is the Free Street application addressed? That's the first step.
I believe that Free Street Inn does currently, I think it is a new
It sounds like, it sounds like it's new to me, yeah. I'm looking, just one second.
One, two, one, two?
Can you back, Matt?
I'm back with you, thank you, Carly.
Oh, not a problem, you sound much better, and you look better, too. Okay, so we have, um, this question, I, I see the, I see the business name as Free Street Inn, Hartstone Inn, as one name.
Oh.
That's one name.
But then the, the Department of Health and Human Services is only Hartstone Inn and Hideaway.
Well, yeah, but that's, the actual state license says Hartstone Inn and Hideaway.
Yes, not Free Street.
Doesn't say anything about Free Street. And the application, lodging establishment, it says Free Street Inn, Hartstone Inn, I, I can't answer the question. I have no idea. Did you hear the question here, Matt?
I did, and I, it's one of my comments as well. And I don't have an answer.
Well, there's a separate application in our packet for the Hartstone Inn only.
That's very, very strange.
Well, I think, I think one of the things we can do here is, we can absolutely approve the Vittler license for the Hartstone Inn portion only, if that's, if the board feels comfortable with that. But the Free Street Inn, Hartstone Inn is, um, is, I, I don't see any existing license for it, it may be an initial application, but I don't see, I think there's just some confusion about ownership and what this Free Street Inn, Hartstone Inn thing is.
And then if you go down further
Which, by the way, excuse me, Mark, for a second, it, it, the lodging, um, establishment application forms, again, there's two of them, and the applicants naming both is the same, I believe, sorry, Mark, go ahead.
And, so the first part of the application's listed as, uh, Free Street and Hartstone Inn, and then the second bunch of application listed as Hideaway Inn and, and Hartstone Inn, and, and there's things about, you know, there's different addresses, this one says no food served at Four Pleasant.
Yeah.
It's, it's sort of confusing about what we're dealing with here.
Yes.
But also, all this, all the licenses, it's the same Department of Health and Human Services License Number 2273
Yeah.
License to the Hartstone Inn and Hideaway, there's no
Yeah, I
We need clarification on
I think we need, I think this has to be tabled, if the board, if the board agrees, um, and
I think we've got Jeremy
To get a clarification.
In here now, I don't know if, I don't see any hands raised, but
No, I, I don't think there's, it'd be the
Yeah, I don't think he has any clarification on it either, so I would recommend you table it.
Does, does the board have any objection to tabling this item until we get further information?
None whatsoever.
Okay, um, we should, we should probably move to table it.
Oh, Jeremy says table it.
Let's move to table it, just
So we're tabling, uh, three, C, D, and E?
Oh, hold on a second, let me see.
They're all sort of tied together.
I need to get back how they are, again, you're a good question, Mark, let me just get back there, please. I'm a little slow in the flipping here. Uh, you're absolutely correct, it'll be C, D, and E. I'd like a motion to table those three.
I'll make a motion, we table three approvals for three C, D, and E, Free Stone Inn, Hartstone Inn, and Hideaway Inn.
Um, are we sure we want to do that to Hartstone also, considering that's an existing
Well, I think Mark's point, he, he points out the, the license they're using on all three is, is the same license, so I'm confused as to what the licenses apply to, and this is third term called the Hideaway Inn, that's in the, yeah, I'm
Well, that's been there also.
And they're using different addresses, at different addresses.
Well, the Hideaway is on, is on, what's this, uh, school street?
Around the corner.
It's around, it's, the Hideaway has been connected to the Hartstone for a long time, it's been operating for a long time, it's, um, Jeremy says
Pleasant Street, Allison, is that what you're thinking?
What was that?
On Pleasant Street?
Yes, yes, that's the one.
Pleasant Street, correct, Matt. Four Pleasant Street, there are two here, Hartstone Inn at 41 Elm, and Hideaway Inn at Four Pleasant, but you know what, it, it, to my opinion, if we're tabling one, we muzzle table all three and get them as a batch and do it right.
I'm just sure, is it, is that gonna cause any kind of car trip for them, if they're, are they currently operating, and this would cause them to have to stop operating, or
I have no idea.
The expiration, it looks like expiration is March 22nd, 2002, on one of the licenses, and I have for the Hartstone Inn and Hideaway, so there's plenty of time.
I think there's time.
Great, okay, sorry.
All right, so to Mark, to Mark, I think you made a motion to
I second.
And she seconded, any discussion?
Jeremy does have his hand up, just pointing that out.
Okay, no, we're gonna continue.
Oh, it's down.
Anyway, all those in favor of tabling those three? One, two, three, four. Matt, could you give a verbal, please?
I am in favor of tabling all three. I was motion-
Okay, thank you very much. And we will move on to our fourth item, which is a, we have two items for liquor license in the form of a public hearing. Before I go into the description of a public hearing, is there anybody from the public here that intends to speak to these, any of these two? And looking at the audience, I see the answer is no. So I won't go through the process of opening the public portion for comment unless somebody on, has a Q and A, and I don't see any Q and As, so not seeing any public input on either media, I will move to revert to select board decision discussion about liquor license for the Fresh at One Bayview Landing for Class One Restaurant Liquor License.
I'll make a motion that we approve the liquor license for the Fresh at One Bayview Landing for Class One Restaurant Liquor License.
A second.
And I would second Mr. Renter's motion.
Thank you, Matt. Motion made. I'm sorry.
He said, sir.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? All those in favor? For Matt?
In favor, thank you.
Thank you. Second item is the Lord Camden Inn at 24 Main Street for a Class Five Bed and Breakfast Liquor License.
I will make a motion that we approve the, the Lord Camden Inn at 24 Main Street for a Class Five Bed and Breakfast Liquor License.
I am a second.
Motion made in second. Any discussion? Not hearing any. All those in favor? Four zero here. And Matt?
In favor. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, that's approved, five zero. Onto item five, which is the, one of our action items, which is the authorization to enter into agreement with MDOT for a state-funded locally administered project for the Rossin Avenue Pedestrian Bridge. And we have the, Audra, do you want to lead us into this one, please? Obviously, the agreement is in our packet, a draft form, and I know Audra's been negotiating with MDOT on this matter. Why don't you give us an outline, please?
Yes, so the MDOT, I don't know what their titles are because there's so many people that we deal with on any one given project. So the person who drafted the agreement is not one of the people who we had our prior discussion with about, you know, the state's role in this project versus the town's role in this project. So we're pretty confident that when we sit down with them to hammer out the details of the agreement tomorrow, it'll be in line with the changes that we have suggested that are in the draft agreement that you have. So really, all I'd be asking for is authorization from the board to negotiate and enter into an agreement for this project. And, you know, for those of you who weren't here, aren't familiar with it, the Rossin Avenue Bridge has been closed to vehicles, not as much pedestrians over the past, I think it's 18 months, maybe a bit longer at this point, because of structural issues with the bridge itself. MDOT was not planning on replacing the bridge. They were just going to remove it and then sort of dead-end Rossin Avenue on both sides. And the reason that they had for not replacing that bridge is that it's redundant and because of, you know, Ames Terrace and Rossin Avenue and how that's configured, that any traffic that would have to go over that bridge can instead go over Ames Terrace. So that was DOT's position, but they said if the town were interested in putting a bridge there, they would split the cost with us. And a pedestrian bridge seemed like the, we had, you know, a few public meetings about this, and it seemed like the pedestrian bridge was what was preferable to most of the residents who turned up at the meeting and like it would serve the, you know, vast majority of the community there who, you know, needs that as a pedestrian connection. So that's, that's the route we went down with MDOT and why the proposal is just for pedestrian bridge and not a multimodal vehicle and pedestrian bicycle bridge.
Pedestrian bicycle.
It is pedestrian bicycle, yeah. So for the FY '22 budget, we allocated $100,000 to the bridge reserve as the first half of our contribution because we already have about $50,000, well, we had $50,000 in that account when we were doing the budgeting, with the understanding that this project, DOT would be ready to go with it in FY '23. So that would give us the opportunity in the FY '23 budget to budget for the second contribution.
So just to be, oh, go ahead, Mark.
I have a question. I was interested that we will build, DOT's not going to build the bridge. We are going to build the bridge. Do we have everything?
So there's something really important about all of this that we're gonna talk to them about in the agreement. They're responsible for removing the bridge and then making the necessary repairs and fixing the banks of the river.
Abutments.
And installing the abutments so we can basically just plop the bridge in there.
With no, no, not any need for any center buttress anymore?
No. No, it'll, it'll span the whole length of the river.
But your question about, my question about the agreement that's in the packet, are you gonna, there's still negotiating going on, is what I heard from you?
Yes, so the, one of the points that the person who drafted the agreement, which is very boilerplate for these types of projects, they weren't privy to this discussion about MDOT having the responsibility of not only removing the bridge, but also stabilizing the riverbank on both sides and prepping the abutments. So they, you know, they weren't aware of that conversation. However, the multimodal project manager who's also involved in this was, you know, was part of those discussions. Our Public Works Director took really good notes on who was there, what was agreed to. So I'm pretty confident that part will be resolved as well as the right-of-way work.
Right.
Because I vowed to anybody at MDOT who will ever listen to me that the town of Camden is never doing their right-of-way work for them ever again.
That's a smart move. I guess the reason I asked that was because if I understand this agreement correctly, there's a shared cost of $500,000, which MDOT pays half, and we pay, they pay up to half, and we pay whatever is remaining, including, including more than half.
Right.
If it should go-
If it goes over budget.
Right. But that's to pay for, correct me, please, that's to pay for the demolition, the redoing the abutments. It's, does that not, that does, that does not include the cost of the pedestrian bridge?
It only includes the cost of the pedestrian bridge.
Only because everything else is in their ticket.
Yes.
Very generous.
So they're paying for half of the building of the pedestrian bridge, which we're gonna be doing?
Up to $250,000.
That's not a problem. Matt, Mark, go ahead.
Have we done any preparation about finding out about building a bridge ourselves?
Back in, I forget when it was, 20-
I think then we could build a bridge ourselves.
2018, we did the feasibility study, and that was for not a pedestrian bridge, but a multimodal bridge.
Right.
So we've got that feasibility study that Gartley and Dorsky did for us at that time.
Right.
So that's, that's pretty much the extent of what we've done.
I would think the smart play here, and you know this already, Audra, and Jean, there were pretty, I mean, if, this, this bridge is long enough so it can be transpired over ground. It's, it's, can be manufactured offsite, and there are numerous suppliers of stuff like that that exist.
That's what I'm curious about.
Oh, yeah, they are. In fact, there's a beauty, I just, everybody wants to see one that's been done around the mountain trail, on Hope Street, the Hope Street side, off of 17. It's, it's, it's not quite as long as we need, but it is really done well. And these bridges are in the order of low six figures, way low six figures.
Okay, so we're not gonna have, we may run over a little bit, but we're not gonna have a problem getting this done.
I don't, I don't see us running over at all. I wouldn't be surprised. I, I think the operations have to decide which bridge, but they're available. And the good news is, as I said, it can be trucked over and put in place, as long as the abutments are designed properly to handle that.
And Dave St. Laurent will be in charge of this?
Mm-hmm.
Which is, couldn't ask for a better person.
Yeah, he's, he's specified as our project manager in the agreement.
Yes.
Okay. So there's no action at this point, Audra?
No, there's an action.
What, what action do you want?
Well, before, before-
Sophie, well, Sophie had her hand up too, but go first.
Go ahead.
Okay, so this is definitely an item of interest to the Pathways Committee that they've discussed before. And then more, so we got some comments from Jeff and Anita on that, but I think, you know, one of those things is like the overall design, there are a lot of factors. And, you know, being able to pass a kayak underneath, for instance, is an issue. The, you know, just general, how aesthetically pleasing it is. So it might be, one of the things Gartley and Dorsky said was that there might be some rerouting of the river there. Currently, the Rossin Avenue Bridge causes all kinds of problems, mostly because of that center abutment, or whatever, not center partition, or whatever you want to call it.
But, yeah.
But it's, there's a lot of fill around there. It's, it narrows the river. It causes, so, you know, there's mention of the Rossin Avenue Bridge in the Watership Feasibility Study, for instance. I just want to make sure that when we do this, that we're not just saying, oh, well, DOT had a bridge here, so we're gonna put a bridge here, and we're gonna do the thing we do, is just try to make it as cheap as possible, which means making it as narrow as possible, which means squeezing the river as much as possible. And just, let's make sure that, you know, some of these options might turn out to be a little bit more expensive, but that it doesn't just become a decision that's made in some silo where it's all cost-based. I think as part of the requirements for the project, it looks like in the stuff I read, that there is a public hearing process that we're required to do.
Yeah, I think a lot, a lot of flesh to be put on the bone to point you're pointing out. I, I think that this budget is substantial enough to handle quite a bit.
Right. I mean, that was initially when they had the vehicle bridge.
Yeah, I mean, to be, to be candid, that, yeah, that is for a vehicle bridge, so-
Which probably wouldn't be enough for a vehicle bridge now, but-
Right, right.
I thought it was three quarter million, but anyway, whatever.
There were a few different options, but-
All right, whatever it is, right now, you're planning the budget of $500,000, as I specified earlier. So, yeah, I think all good input during the process, but Sophie, you had your hand up.
Yeah, so, thanks, Bob. Agreed with Allison on the, on the aesthetic of the bridge. Let's do something that looks really nice. I mean-
Oh, sure.
Our Public Works need to be, you know, we have a pretty town. We need to keep on making it pretty. Anita sent me comments. Do I share her comments now, or? I mean, she tapped on the, her issue was around the budget, and I think we addressed those questions.
Around what?
The budget, and the splitting of the 50/50, and the overage. So I think that was a, that was addressed. She's also asking, did the town determine that this arrangement is a better financial agreement than MDOT removing bridge and re-landscaping at their expense and walking away, then town comes in and at their expense designs and build bridge? My understanding was that initially, these are the two agreement choice options that were offered. Do you understand what she means?
Yes.
I mean, she's really, that's a very, very smart comment that she's making. And that, it could sort of turn-
We're better off with this option, basically, is, yeah.
Oh, that, that, I mean, I think that we wouldn't, hopefully with this agreement, we wouldn't be committing necessarily to the bridge being in the exact same place.
Right.
There used to be another pedestrian bridge that was there that went over to the tannery.
Yeah, and I, I mean, and I don't want to get into this too much tonight because I don't know what the outcome is going to be, but it could very well be that it's, it's a better outcome to have the bridge go more at an angle.
Yes.
Across the, you know, and, and one end is on the tannery property, and then the other end is on the section of Rossin Avenue that's, sorry, north, the northern section as opposed to the southern section?
Northwest.
Yeah, northwest. So, I mean, and-
But that's all being thought of, yeah.
Here's one last, last comment. The town is responsible for all environmental approvals, permits, and licenses, including DOT work, question mark. Why aren't those acquisitions and costs distributed according to the work done by each entity, or at least clearly designated as to who is responsible? So I guess this is something you need to answer later.
Right, and this is all part of the negotiation. Like I said, I'm, I'm just never going to agree to another project with MDOT where we do the right-of-way work. It's illogical.
You did such a great job. You did so well, Audrey.
It's just illogical for us to do it. We have to go to town meeting. They have a statutory process where they can do takings without the same level of involvement.
They have people that do it.
And they have a whole office of people that do it professionally. It makes no sense for us to do it, so I'm not going to agree to that. And then the environmental side of things, because of the fact that they'll be responsible for removing the old bridge and stabilizing the riverbank by virtue of the fact that that's their responsibility, they're going to be the ones that have to go through the DEP and do the permitting and the Army Corps.
Perfect. That's the way it should be.
That's, I need a question for this topic, but-
Allison.
The only thing is with in-kind contributions, I'm assuming that the town's significant staff time-
They don't care about that.
Really?
Mm-hmm. That doesn't count. It's not factored into the grant agreement. They don't care about it. We don't have to report on it. It's, they just assume that we're going to appoint a project manager, and they have to have certain qualifications.
Makes sense, or else it eats the whole budget.
So you're saying, then I would say we would not have, maybe we would have less staff time going into this if we're, if we hire somebody to do it, if that can count towards the total cost.
No, that will not count towards it. This is, the, the $250,000 that we're putting in is for engineering. If we have to do the right-of-way work, it could go towards that, and then construction, and that's it. You can't allocate any staff costs as part of your-
So we should probably try to have, but if you have somebody that's not a staff person do it, then it-
No.
Then it's an additional cost. I mean, I think we should, yeah, so, okay.
Like if we had an engineer-
Normally, you can charge-
That was overseeing the construction, like, you know, that's, but that's about it. But, I mean, on, even on projects like that, we still have to have, you know, like our Public Works Director involved.
Sure.
So what are you asking us to authorize today?
To negotiate and then-
Authorize, negotiate, execute a locally administered project agreement with the main Department of Transportation.
Authorizing Audra to do it.
Yes.
Did you motion?
I'll make a motion that we authorize the town manager to negotiate and execute a locally administered project agreement with the main Department of Transportation.
I second.
Motion made in second. Discussion. All those in favor? Mr. Segal, a verbal, please? You're, I can't hear you, Matt. Can you hear us? Your, your, your sound is gone, Matt. Just go like this if you say yes. Thank you, Matt. Thanks so much, Matt.
I don't, I think that might be a no.
I don't know.
Did you see the motion you did?
I did, I did. That's right. That's why he was mimicking me. Thank you, Matt. She's laughing, of course. But anyway, on to, on to our-
By the way, good deal for us.
Next, next agenda item. Let me just get back to it. The second action item we have is the tannery redevelopment reuse subject. There is a memo in our packet that was presented before to the Select Board. As to some of the history, if there are any questions to that, we should, otherwise we'll consume. Everybody's up to speed with where we are today. And really, this, this action item is to discuss the path forward, either, as Audra's blue notes suggest, we have a variety of options, re-entering into discussions with entities that still survive from our last activity or others, and, and the related zoning issues, et cetera, et cetera. I guess to cut to the nutter, Audra, we, as terms of the activity we went through with the proposals and blah blah, there's only one that remains from that batch, which is the Crane Sport proposal. Is that, is that an accurate statement?
It's an accurate statement, but I would say that, you know, Habitat for Humanity remains interested in doing a project on, on the site. They're, you know, they're open to, you know, adjusting their proposal to include, you know, more dense housing development. You know, they're, they're, they remain interested, I guess is probably the best way to say it, but it would be different. And I think, you know, to my notes, that if the Select Board wants to go down the route of, you know, kind of doing a housing development, there's a lot of work that needs to be done, or not a lot, but there's work that needs to be done on the zoning ordinance to change it so it can facilitate that more easily than, than it currently exists. So I would say that if that's the path the Select Board would like to consider, because I, you know, I do remember when the prior board had these discussions, there was an interest in having some housing component, that that is addressed because I think that it's really difficult to try to find a partner who's willing to do a project like that and get them to wait around for us to do all the things that we need to do to make their project possible. So I think it's, you know, it's really important. We, we heard from, you know, affordable housing developers, it's just not gonna pencil without a TIF. So, you know, changing the zoning, putting an affordable housing TIF in place, there's just a bunch of work that we need to do on our end to prep that site for housing development, if, if that's what you want to do and if you want it to be successful. So I think it's a matter, do you want to go down that path, or do you want to sort of stick with how it's currently zoned? of stick with how it's currently zoned and the one proposal that you have that, that is consistent with the current manner in which the site is owned?
And so the, the one avenue has some zoning issues we have to deal with probably first and get those out of the way, otherwise, why would you touch it with a 10-foot pole if you didn't know you had a clear vision of what goes on the site versus, again, I'm correct, Crane Sport would not require any zone?
No, not their original proposal.
Original proposal, okay. Well, so that's the issue at hand.
Anita has some comments as well, is it, is it a good time?
Let's read hers first.
Is it, is it okay, Bob?
Comments from whom?
Anita, on the tannery.
Okay, go ahead.
I am of the opinion that the housing issues our town faces can be addressed in other ways than placing housing on the tannery site. The planning board is already working on issues that will encourage housing through rules and zoning adjustments. I encourage the town to do anything they can to support the formation of a housing trust, as is underway, and to find ways to assist low-income residents for housing through the trusts. Housing is under stress all over the country, no less here. We should not change the town's plans based on the COVID-generated increase in housing demand. I think a commercial slash work slash slash job enhancement use is more beneficial to the town as is public slash community use.
Okay.
There's more?
Oh, go ahead.
The location begs for those uses. The select board has not discussed Mullins' proposal, or the others for that matter, as was expected to do so once the new members were seated. The select board should discuss the still-interested proposers' projects and vote on them. I think that Michael Mullins' proposal makes the most sense, it combines community uses, including the farmer's market, with buildings and spaces for makers. The buildings proposed will lend themselves well to further adaption, adaptations as needs change. Combining housing on top of those maker's spaces will be awkward as needs change and add extreme expense to the project with questionable benefit relative to housing gained. The town could use the 250,000 purchase price Mullins offers towards housing elsewhere. Town does not get that if, that dollars if he has to incorporate housing. Thanks for considering all this, I am bummed about my schedule conflict, Anita.
Thank you. Mark, you had your hand up.
Yeah, I was going to say, for Matt and Sophie, the background on this, there were two, as I remember, two citizen-involved meetings around the tannery. One was, I think, was 2012, some, Allison, do you remember, oh, the first one?
One.
2014, something like that.
Oh, there have been.
But they, but they're.
That's 2008, 2000.
Yeah, the two, the two most recent ones were, I think, 2012, 14, somewhere, and 2018.
I read a whole thing about this, actually.
Yeah, but they, the, the first one recommended, the recommendation that came out of it was for business and not housing, and that one was adapted and voted on at town meeting, I believe.
Yes.
Now, the second one was the, the citizens of the park, and there were, a lot of people attended that, they were at the middle school, so there's a lot of attention, and the report was accepted by the select board, but it doesn't have the same legal status that the first one does. So technically, the town voted, and, but it was a long time ago about having business apply. Now, since this has all happened, we've seen a need for housing, and there are a couple of solutions there, but I just wanted to give you a background.
Yeah.
At the last time, the town had a legal vote from the citizens, it was about business.
Yep.
Thank you, Mark.
Thanks, Mark. Other comments? Matt, everything you want to add? Questions? I don't think you can hear me. Matt, can you hear me? I, I get no sound from you, Matt.
Even now, you have nothing?
Now, now I got sound, thank you. Did you want to make any comments as I go around the room here?
I'm listening right now.
Okay, okay.
I am.
Okay, Allison, do you want to make any comments? I will start, you know, we want to talk about it, it seems to me, there's a, there's a couple of three factors we are evaluating here. One, we, we all said in the last meetings we had before Matt and Sophie joined, that, you know, we were really angled towards housing, this comprehensive plan dictates all of that and, you know, it's very important, totally, we all agreed. Unfortunately, we, in that pressure, we made a strategic boo-boo by trying to put some ribbons on the pig, and, and in terms of adding housing and component with the Crane Sport proposal, and we had a very short fuse to get her done for a potential going to last June's elections, I recall. There just wasn't time for that because of tremendous complications, and that then, at least in my mind, drove a lot of us to look at alternative locations for housing because the dent we were, in hindsight, the dent we were making with this, what, if you take away farmer's market, et cetera, et cetera, you're dealing with about two acres of housing is marginal, and we do, we can consider other locations for more, more effective, more larger housing development projects, which the town definitely needs. But the difference between the two is, is a multi-step process for going the housing route, one, there is a, not a multi-step process except for getting an agreement with Crane Sport, it's effective and controlled and dotted i's and crossed t's, and there's a quarter million dollars of, I can't ignore, of, in that proposal for the town, the town, taxpayers have, have and will be paying money for their, for the, what do we call it, the brownfield.
Clean up.
Yeah, it's something, I don't know what it is, Mark, but it will be paying something, and goes a long way to, to pay back the residents for taxpayers for what we paid to date, so gives an advantage there, but those are kind of the big picture, kind of look, we absolutely can do another RFP to go out for housing-type proposals. In parallel with that, we could, you know, immediately go to, you know, getting changes to the zoning ordinance in parallel, but my gut feeling is, if we do that, the interest from outside entities is going to be very limited for two reasons. One, they saw what happened last time in terms of how we handled that whole situation, and there's going to be caution. Two, I, I would be, if it was me in development mode, I, I wouldn't touch it until the housing zoning thing is, is put in place, and I think that would be the sequence, we'd have to do the zoning, in my opinion, we'd have to do the zoning changes first, then the RFP, so it makes for a much longer project. That's just, I'm just trying to put it in context of, of the challenges of going either way. Mark?
One other thing I'll add to the facts about the last two public meetings, the last one, I think in 2018, was never voted on by, by the town's citizens, but there were a lot of people involved, and some things that came out of it were obviously maintaining that space for the farmer's market, which has been very successful there.
Yes.
They've had way better success as a farmer's market there than any other location they've had in town, and there's a lot of, a lot of people feel that some sort of park would be there. I would love to see, I think Crane Sport do the business situation, because that seems to be the thing that's, you know, the simplest in presentation, but yet maybe leave enough room, obviously for the farmer's market, and they agreed to that, and leave some room for, I think there's room for some sort of park facility as well.
I thought the Crane's proposal allowed for some of those things already.
I know it did the farmer's market, I don't remember if it did the park as well, but I'd like to see that, that way.
Sure.
You know, would, you know, go a long way to taking the consideration of the citizens in, in all manner and trying to do the best we can with, as he said, a pig with ribbons on it, or something to that effect.
Bad expression, but Allison, you have your hand up, I could tell, I could, I could hear it back there.
That was impressive, it's, yeah, so, having watched a lot of this process for a long time, it's, it's helped me to go from a place where I cared deeply about what happened there to a place where I don't know if I do, and I think that's what happens to a lot of people, the longer they stay involved, or they just become very angry and cease to be involved. I think that, basically, we've just never been able to get to the point where we put something out to voters. The closest they came was, you know, in 2008, something was put out saying, these are the guiding principles that shall be followed, and for some reason, everybody keeps voting on those again every year, none of that includes housing. I don't know really how meaningful any of that is or isn't, but the, the biggest takeaway for me is that we just can't get to the point where we let anybody vote on things, and so that is sort of my goal, just to not do, you know, not take another step where we're preparing to maybe let people vote on things. There's 20 years of planning that has gone into establishing that site as somewhere that would be appropriate for some kind of economic development. I have concerns about the setback from the river and all kinds of things that I would probably be really outspoken about.
In terms of housing?
Nope, for anything, you know, for anything, but I think that there would be value in just asking, you know, we did get one proposal that complies with all of the, with all of the current zoning and with all of the guiding principles that have been voted on over the years. I think it would be okay for the select board to put something out to voters and maybe even argue against it, say, I support putting this out to voters, but maybe I don't, you know, I don't think we would need to feel like we have to support what goes out, but that at this point, when the town has invested so much money, I mean, that million dollars in cleanup, the initial cleanup, that was all done saying that there was going to be some kind of return on that investment, and it would be really clarifying if we were to put something out to voters, and it got voted down, because that, to me, would be the sign that, yeah, housing really needs to be considered here, and that would be, I think people in town have changed a lot of views about it, but that we would just do everybody a favor by doing something that would allow us to stop speculating about what people want. We get a lot of people that come in and say, everybody feels really strongly about this, and, you know, I say, well, the people at the grocery store say this, and the people at transportation say this, and the people in the select board meeting room say this, and everybody sort of claims to be speaking for the majority, and I'm just tired of having that discussion, so I'd rather something go out to voters, I think we do have something that could go out, and then it could, we could all say, you should vote no on this, and then we'll change, you know, then we'll change the zoning. But, yeah, so that's my two cents.
Mark, you had your hands up.
I think the key thing that Allison just said is we need to do something.
Yeah.
And I think it's putting it out to the voters and letting the town speak, that's our job.
Yep.
You know, our job is not to make decisions about what to do, our job is to put things in front of the people, and we need to do that, so then we get a clearer idea of what they want, and I think you're right, if we approve a proposal and put it out there, the town will tell us if they're in favor, if they're not in favor, they'll give us a clue about where to go, and we need everybody to be involved, not just the representative people that show up here.
Yeah, we agree. Did you have something, Sophie?
No, no.
Oh, okay, I, I think.
Sorry, no, no.
I, I think that, you know, there were, there were three of us that went through the, more frankly, the frustration, hard work, which, you know, we can get, well, now for proposals, we can criticize or not the RFP, whether it's perfect or not, that's, yeah, that's possible, we all wanted housing, we all said that's all, but, but by the end of the day, we saw the economic benefit of what Crane Sport was proposing. What they're proposing here is a very, actually sexy, it is, with the, with the, what do you call it, pavilion that they proposed and other things for potential use, as well as supporting the farmer's market and those kinds of important things to the town, but it, there's an economic benefit, this, this workplace kind of thing is what towns, in my opinion, what towns need to nurture business and people to get into businesses, there's a lack of, of resources in the world of workspace, you know, whether it's trades or not, I think that is huge, and behind my thinking, though, I would like the board to continue being very serious about alternative sites that we had discussed at that point in time, that are much, well, substantially larger, that can affect, a more dramatic effect on housing, because I said, like I said, that, my frustration is what Mark just said, I think if we start going through, doing zoning changes, that'll take until whenever, you know, after that, we do an RFP, and after, you know, we're, you're out two years, you know, you're, you're out, you're out, way out in space, and I prefer to take action and test the voting market also. Sophie?
But I, I do think that, because to my knowledge, there's at least one other group that's, that's developing a proposal potentially for the tannery, I think that we do need to let them know also.
Sure.
Because we don't want them to run out of steam on something that has no chance of.
No, no.
Single out of day, or, so I think we need to manage this also.
I would encourage that.
So that we don't, we don't lose goodwill.
I agree, I just think the complications with the, with the tannery and housing and its size, it's just not that big.
Yeah, it's right down in town, that's also.
Well, it's very much, that's very much a positive, right. Any other comments?
Allison.
Allison.
Sorry. Oh, that's okay, that's what I have Sophie for now. I mean, I, I'm not really saying that I think the Mullins' proposal, or the Crane Sport proposal would be better than housing. I personally can't decide, I would, I was really excited about the enthusiasm from people about supporting affordable housing there, I think everybody always says, housing is such a crisis in town, and, but then we refuse to do anything that would create dense housing, so I could support any number of options there, and I think voters could too. I see no evidence that, that we as a group can get to the point where we put anything out to voters, the, there was, the, the housing thing before, everybody got, some people, or just enough, got cold feet too, because, well, it's great, but it's just a little too much housing, and, and then everybody, we tried to turn it into this Goldilocks thing.
That's right.
Well, we can't, we have everything, and then, so, I, I think that it would be totally appropriate to say, no, I am, we are still going to rally for housing there, and somebody could go in and rally for a no vote, and I think some people will, because some people will see it as the best, like, the closest we've gotten to some really dense affordable housing, and that's okay, but it's just at this point, the debate should take place among everybody and give everybody a chance to weigh in, and that, we should sort of frame that for people, this is what you're deciding on. We could also ask voters if they would want to give the, you know, how much discretion do they want to give the select board in negotiating the details? We could say, you know, we could go to the level of putting things in that say, you know, any purchase price would get used for, you know, some affordable housing, you know, to fund an affordable housing trust or whatever, and then we identify land somewhere else. But anyway, I, I don't want to say that, I don't think that our message should be, oh, we don't think, we think this is better than.
No, no, I, I agree.
Because we might never get there.
And, and I, I think we have to do something with the tannery, I totally agree, especially now that the remediation process is going to be done by the end of September, right? So it's kind of, there's a momentum here.
Although, I mean, I, my, my personal overall goal there is to clean up the riverbank, because that is the part.
Yeah.
I mean, we say it's separate, but it's only separate because we've chosen for it to be separate, and we are going to need probably some money for it, but the cleanup is not done.
Right, right.
So.
But what I'm, what I'm saying is that, that there's an opportunity there that, that forces us to, into a decision, so I think it's, I think it's great, we should decide, and I'm not trying to.
Yeah, I think.
Delay the, the decision process, Bob, that's not my point, my point was just to make sure that we clearly communicate with anybody who's interested in putting a proposal forward, so we don't lose their.
Sure, sure, but as, as I heard what you said, Allison, it's more, and I agree with it, I think you can put something, take something forward to the town and let the electorate start to weigh in on, you know, the, the vote on, on, say, the Crane Sport proposal, for example, is, is a vote on, you know, housing, it's, among other things, housing versus workplace versus whatever, if it's defeated, then it's a very clear signal as a direction it has to go in.
Right, this is the best we could do.
I, I agree, I think that we need to take advantage of our, of a disadvantage sometimes, which is our town meeting, former government, but the electorate needs to weigh in, and we have this burden in the hand, which has a lot of good elements to it, I believe, I would certainly support. I, I would certainly support taking it and let the voters make some decisions for us. But in parallel, but I say in parallel with that, though, we, I feel strongly that we need to keep the emphasis on alternative locations for housing. And I think we, this needs to be, somehow remain a priority, a recommendation, a priority for the select board, to look at these options in parallel with the kind of thing. So I would, I would certainly be in favor of taking, now, Audra, just the real logistics here, if the board were to want to take something to the electorate, especially the Crane Sport proposal, it's going to take quite a bit of time to develop a purchase and sale agreement. What I'm, what I'm getting at here.
I think having, if, if you're able to give me clear direction tonight, which I feel pretty confident from the comments I've received from you all, that you can come up with a clear motion that gives me a really concrete direction, I can start right away with, you know, the negotiations around that. And, and I got to be honest, the negotiations are going to have to be pretty cut and dried because of, you know, my experience from doing this about a year ago. I can't give you any guarantees that we're going to be able to come to an agreement. But I think that I, I will certainly try my hardest, and I'm going to make it very straightforward and very much based on the original proposal.
I understand, and I guess what I'm questioning is, is the objective of this, to get this purchase and sale prepared for June?
Yes.
Oh, that's, that's clear. I thought that would get a little bit of a challenge, but.
Well.
It, it might be, but I don't, I would not recommend you move forward with getting this approved by voters unless you have that all nailed down and agreed.
I totally agree. In fact, if it, if it, again, points to the complications of moving forward, but the objective would be to try to make it for June, okay? And then we would update it.
Right, and like I'm saying, you know, if, if you can, like, give me the clear direction that it looks like you're moving towards tonight, I think that we have enough time to do that.
Well, to that end, do we have a motion to that regard?
Well, we put a motion in terms of debate. Question to the chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair, we, and Audra just mentioned this, this is the original, just a point of clarification, this is the original Crane Sport proposal without the additional 12 units of housing. I just wanted, that as a point of clarification.
Yes. Well, that's, that's what I believe we've been discussing, because, Matt, to your question, if we went to the, the permutation, we would have to go through the same process of zoning changes.
Exactly.
There is housing allowed on the second floor.
Correct.
Currently.
Correct, correct.
Sorry, I don't know.
Correct, correct. But to Matt, I think, you know, to keep it simple, you know, KISS principle for us engineers, I think, my feeling is, you go with the original proposal as drafted, period. But, but keep, keep going, Matt.
And in terms of terms and conditions, Audra, do we need to, at this point, be discussing terms and conditions or just overall proposal? Because again, terms and conditions would include sale price, they would include tax incentives, and such, and such and such and so forth. Again, is that in our purview, and is that something that we would be putting forth this evening, as opposed to just giving a nod towards that original Crane Sport proposal?
I think tonight, if you just give me a nod towards the original proposal.
Right.
Then that gives Bill and I the ability to set to work on all the details.
Purchase and sale agreement and all the factors involved in it. Because there is no Tiff involved in this, is there?
No.
Yeah.
We did not ask for that in the original proposal.
That's what I, that's what I recall too. But does that answer your question, Matt?
Yeah, I mean, that gets us back, basically, we're doing a reset for Crane Sport, which is what I just wanted to make sure was clear to all in terms of.
That's, that's my recommendation, and the board can do what it wants to do, but I, I think we, we've already headed down the path, to your point, Matt, of trying to modify to, you know, like a checker game, and it backfires, it just takes, it's just the timing, it's just, just very difficult. Allison.
I'm a tiny bit nervous with the pace of things, at the, just at this, I know it's kind of like the opposite of what I just said, but at this meeting, because I worry, what I think would be bad is if it gets to the point where we send Audra off to do a bunch of work, and then she reaches some kind of a conclusion, or.
Stillmate?
I wonder if there are details that she may need just a little more working knowledge of where, what would be a yes or a no. I say this from the experience of what happened last time, and it didn't, you know, Bill's not here.
Right.
I, are we going to argue about things like whether it can ever be owned by a nonprofit? Or what, are we going to argue about, like, what, in terms of things in that original proposal? In the original proposal, it said, we should use the cash, the ma, the money to, as match for a certain grant program. That, I don't think, there are all kinds of little things like that, that I don't know if that's going to hang up the project, or it's not, or.
That's a normal process.
I think the Riverwalk needs to be, we may need some flexibility. I don't know where he's flexible and where he isn't. Are we just asking Audra to kind of assess that and then bring that, something back to us, or?
Audra, if you do the purchase and sale, will it come back to us?
Yes.
I think that's, I think that, that, that's normal process, and I think we can always kill it.
Because the, the way the warrant article will be worded, it's, you know, do you approve the purchase and sales agreement?
Right.
So.
So we can discuss a lot of things.
As a, as a, you know, a document, and as something that you're presenting to voters, you all have to approve that specific document being what goes to them.
This just seems like a huge amount of work. Is, is there, are we sure that this approach is better than asking voters to authorize the select board to negotiate a purchase and sales agreement based on the proposal?
I wouldn't do that. I, I wouldn't do that. I think you're.
It's easier for people to say yes or no.
Yeah, exactly. Either you're voting for the sale, the responsibility is, is to the town to have the details of that purchase and sale. If I was a resident in Sauson, then to negotiate a purchase and sale, we don't need their approval to do that. We, we can.
I know, I just, how much, we already know that everybody is very busy, and we struggle to get basic things done.
I agree.
In town, we struggle to update our comprehensive plan and all of these things. And so I'm, I know that this is going to, it's be a huge amount of time, and I'm wondering if we should.
I turned to the town manager and asked her.
I'm not going to, I'm not going to deny, it is going to be a huge amount of time. And it was a difficult, it was a difficult process when you asked me to do it a year ago, and I wasn't able to get to a point where we had something that we could bring before voters, so.
And the fuse was shorter then, too.
The fuse was shorter, and it was a more, it was a much more complicated scenario.
I think, if I hear.
We should do this, or not? I mean, I think we should generally follow some recommendations from our town manager, rather than.
I would say that what you're all doing is consistent with 20 years of planning and what the residents have consistently voted on. I don't, you know, again, we don't know how meaningful that is, but like Allison said, year after year after year.
Yeah.
Everybody votes and approves these guiding principles.
Yeah.
So, I mean, can you ignore the will of the voters since 2008, who've said that this is what they want done, and then they vote in support of it year after year? I'd, I'd say that's pretty compelling.
One second, Matt.
So, you know, there, there's a lot of different ways, it's, this is like a purely policy select board decision on how, what you want to do with the site and how you move it forward and how you present it to the voters.
Exactly.
But I would say that, you know, based on the history of the site and based on the things that haven't progressed, where it tends to get hung up and where the select board hasn't been able to get to a point where they've presented something to the voters, a lot of it was through the due diligence process and negotiating things like purchase and sales agreements.
Right.
So I, I guess that's another data point for you all to consider when you're trying to figure out how you move this forward.
Well, I want to move to Matt, Matt, one second, just want to close in that thought, because if you're going to, you mentioned very, a little bit ago, that this is going to be a very strict, you know, agreement that you're going to be crafting with Crane Sport. Now, if.
I don't, yeah, and I don't think that, just like I said, based on the experience last year, I don't think offering a lot of sort of wiggle room and going back and forth too much and being too loose with it is a good thing.
Right.
It's not a good thing.
But my point is, you, you put this very strict, I'm calling it a strict, you know, black and white, to the proposal here, and that doesn't work. You're going to be coming back to us and saying, I'm sorry.
Absolutely. I couldn't, I couldn't do it.
And you have to understand that part.
And I'm just saying this because I want to prepare you all, because that might happen.
I totally agree. If, if I'm a developer and you tell me something, I'm sorry, I'm just not going to do it, that's the end of that deal, and we, we pursued a data point, blah, 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 but I want to emphasize that before. Matt, you've had your head up for an hour.
Again, as a new member, relatively new member of the board, I haven't had a chance to review the Crane, the original Crane Sport. So again, I would not in any way interfere this evening if you decide to put a motion forward, but I would only be in a position to abstain, and I would love not to be in that position, to actually be able to make an informed vote. Again, do not know, just putting it out there, that for my personal ability to make an informed vote, I would need an opportunity to review that original proposal. Thank you.
Well, good point to you, to your point. Mark?
One last thing, I think what Audra needs is a decision so that when people vote, it's a yes or no vote, it's not a, maybe do you want this, or possibly we could just, we need to have a concrete situation so people can go yes or no.
Yeah.
And then, and then we'll know how the people feel.
Yeah, this purchase and sale agreement stuff is, they started one already. This is not, it's not starting from scratch, except for we complicated it last time, makes it even simpler to go forward with the purchase and sale. I think, I would agree, I think, I think we should give Audra.
Yeah, to Mark's point, I mean, that's one of the reasons also why I think bringing a purchase and sales agreement to voters is the route I'd recommend you go. It is a very concrete, do you want to do this, yes or no? There's no, there's no room for, well, the question was worded badly, and I don't know what you meant, and this isn't really what I wanted, even though, you know, I mean, and I think we all want to avoid that every, and I don't, and voters want clarity as well.
They do.
You know, everyone, everyone wants to be very clear on it, regardless of whether they support it or not, as to what it is that they're being asked.
Right.
Although then everybody gets upset when they find out why then some negotiation broke down or didn't, because it was, so I've seen it, I think I would prefer to not vote on this to, tonight, because I didn't actually have, it was, I'm kind of thrilled at the idea that we would move forward with something, but I think it's important that everybody has a chance to review that, and I hear Matt and think that's a valid, very valid.
It is, it is, but I think we've also keep kicking a can down the road, and I'd like to hear a motion.
Well, you could, I mean, as, as a way of sort of like.
Yep.
Getting some forward motion, but maybe not overcommitting to something where, you know, you, you know you're going to have to make the final decision, so you'd rather have some agency over it upfront. Maybe you can direct me to draft a purchase and sales agreement based on Crane Sport's original proposal, and that'll come back to you all.
Yeah, but Audra, you're putting a step in there where you, you can come back to us till we turn blue, but if something happens with discussions with Crane Sport, that a logical, you're going to do it again? I think you need to.
Well, I mean, we've got to draw the line somewhere.
We need to authorize you to, to negotiate something with Crane Sport and then bring it back or not.
Mm-hmm.
That should be black and white. No, you, you can't keep going, we keep vacillating on this thing, and I think it's, you know, we better off to take it off the table completely.
Well, and also, I mean, what would be consistent with how you've been treating other projects is that you appoint one select board member to work with me to do it.
Sure, sure. Mark, your point.
I'd like to make a motion that we authorize Audra to, to, to make a sales, make an agreement. And, and then obviously it'll come back to us, and in the, in the time that she goes to make an agreement, Matt will have time to review, and we'll, we'll have time to review, and we will see the final agreement and then make a decision on that.
Mm-hmm.
But that's my motion, that we get, we start to start the process.
Have a second. I'll second it, you'll allow the vote. Discussion, go ahead.
So the agenda item was related to a recommendation that if we wanted to move forward with housing there, we should move forward with a zoning change, you know, question to voters. And so that's sort of what I think was.
That, that's not what the motion is. The motion.
No, 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 that's what the agenda item was.
Agenda, the agenda item says, I want your clarification towards a variety of options for choosing going forward, to pursue the, the options from the past that are still valid, or to recommend seeking a zoning ordinance for alternative solutions. That's the way it reads.
Yes, but I mean, I, and I'm prepared to say tonight, I don't see that the planning board has time for any of this. There are much higher priorities for the planning board, all of these things, but we also have much higher priorities as a town than having Audra spend a bunch of time drafting a purchase and sales agreement. I mean, is this something you, I just, I don't see why, what is the, help me understand what the value would be in doing it tonight versus in two weeks when.
It's time.
Matt has time to think about it, and.
We, we keep doing this, we keep kicking it, two more weeks out of this thing, and we had a short fuse.
We haven't even been discussing it, and.
We, we're requesting to make a decision, pro con, I understand Matt's position, he hasn't, anyway, he hasn't had a chance to look at the proposal, but.
He's a pretty unique position.
Yeah, well, that's, it is, Matt, that's what it is, but, but, you know, yeah.
It's been a little while since I've looked at it too, so what are we saying? Are we saying each bill, you know, that's where the number of buildings that were in that initial proposal? Are we saying the, I don't know what level of, I can't remember what level of flexibility was in that proposal.
If we kick it down the road, then I suggest we leave it on the table and don't do anything with it. Because if we go into, first of all, if you go into two weeks into February 1st, we got a short fuse for warrants for June, it's, it's going to be, we did it the last time, the same exact thing happened. We wanted to wait and see if there was an agreement by Crane Sport to include housing at that time, we wanted to see if you'd approve it. And, and then we'd be kicking it in November, so there's no rush to do anything, we wouldn't do anything, in my opinion. Mark?
The reason I made the motion is because, one, we need to see what kind of agreement we come up with. And two, then we are able to have a vote from the public that'll tell us, yes, they want businesses there, or no, they don't. And if, we get them to make a decision about what we want.
Yeah, also making, you're making this too complicated.
You know, because, you know, the three big decisions were, you know, we kept hearing from people, were housing, business, and park. We need to start making this, because until we make a decision, nobody can do anything.
Right.
I agree with that, I just, can you help me understand the amount of time that you're expecting to put into this, is, right now?
I mean, quite honestly, the most time consuming and difficult part of this is getting hold of the applicant.
You seem very, very negative about this, I'm just going to put it out here, it's very hard to feel like this is something that you want us to do, you seem that it's something that you don't want to do, and that makes me uncomfortable.
No, I, hey, this is, this is one where it is absolutely 100%.
I agree.
A select board policy decision.
Right.
I feel pretty much the same as the three of you sitting here who have been dealing with this since you're day one on the board, where, you know, you get to a point where you're pretty.
Centurions.
Agnostic about what happens there, you just want to see some sort of forward progress. I think what, what makes me the most enthusiastic and happy about where you seem to be going is it's a very clear, it's a clear direction that you're giving me on how you would like to move forward. I think that's incredibly positive, and I think that you're, you know, giving voters the opportunity to say whether or not the 20 years of planning that's led up to this point is what they want to commit to or not.
Right.
So, but I, I just, and I, I'm not trying to be negative, I'm trying to be very practical about, like I said, based on past experience, and I know it is a little bit different because it's more simple and I think more straightforward.
Much more.
But it was pretty challenging trying to, to negotiate that agreement for a lot of other reasons last time.
I mean, that was, that was just such wishful thinking on our part, that we can make all of those things happen. Is there any value in saying, hey, Bob and Sophie, why don't you do this with Bill? And is it something that needs reclaim, or could you be spared in any way?
I mean, that's, again, that's your, your decision to make. I, you know, I, I don't think it's the hugest time commitment, like I said, is just the, the back and forth with the applicant.
That's why I think I'm asking.
Participation? Participation?
I think that we, one of our, the biggest things is using the town manager's time well, and that's what makes me concerned. And I see that we have people on the board that might be able to, rather than getting to a point of trying to figure out, well, what did they talk about? And then report back to us, and then if somebody had enthusiasm for this, and--
I think the key to what she, just, I'd be--
So would, I mean, Bob, I think Bob could be, Bob's a great negotiator.
Bob was involved last time, so it's--
I was.
It's pretty consistent, and there's continuity.
But I want it clear that your decision is final, because you're the town manager. I'm happy to make, do it and make recommendations, but if you think it's too loose or whatever, that's your job to make sure we keep it strict. I've written hundreds--
Or she'd rather be relieved of that.
I would, it's up to you, Audra. I'd be happy to work with Bill.
Well, I mean, the benefit in having Bob or another board member there is that I don't have to speculate as to whether or not, oh, is this something that, you know, the board is going to really want to dig in on, or is it something that, you know, they're going to be--
Like Bob and Mark, I would, I feel like if Bob and Mark would do this together, it would be like, rather than finding out that, oh, well, parking for the Riverwalk turned out to be the deal breaker, which gets frustrating--
Yeah.
--because it's like Bill remembers what the select board said 10 years ago, and and it, obviously, it's hard to, always speculate, but I just feel, I don't know.
Well, I'd be happy to, and I think Mark is indicating you would, too. Might take some of the load off of you, Audra, as worker bees.
Whatever you want to do.
Does that sound smart to you, Sophie?
Yeah, like, does this make it harder for Audra, or maybe--
Yeah, tell us.
I mean, I'd prefer if it's one person, because it's, the more people involved, the harder it always gets.
I'd be glad to do it.
But, I mean--
And then Bob can talk to Mark when, as needed.
All of you, all of you. I want to talk to Matt, too, because--
Not to Audra, like not making Audra talk to--
Well, I want to talk to, well, Audra, of course, but, you know, Matt's made a good point. He hasn't read the proposal yet. I'd be interested in your input, you know, to, as I go through the process. Honestly, I've written dozens of purchases and sales for projects like this. Because we simplified the project, this is a lot easier.
It is a lot easier.
The only thing we have to be concerned about in the purchase and sales, protecting the town from certain--
The river.
Well, yeah, and the river, yes, and global flooding. But no, no, seriously, we're protecting the town from what can happen in situations with a developer, is that you might wind up with this back on your lap someday. You know, that's got to be prevented right up front. There's no equivocation on that.
Or having some sort of clawback provisions if it isn't developed in the manner that we--
Exactly.
--agree to. You know, it's stuff like that.
Those are the keys. The proposal is straightforward. You'll see it, Matt. You'll be able to take a look at it. It's fairly straightforward, but go ahead, Matt.
I think Bob's the right person. This is his, this is his world. This was his business. He knows what's going on. And I'd like to call the vote.
I would, too.
Good for you, Mark. This is, I'm like, okay, I can follow Mark through.
And don't, and Matt, don't tell Robert's rules about calling the vote, because that's a whole nother process. But anyway, I think we should call the vote. All those in favor of that, including my--
We just said--
Including sucking me in, which I'm happy to do. All those are in favor of that proposal. For, Matt, if you prefer to abstain, that's fine.
Yes, sir.
Okay, now, I understand.
One extension, thank you.
No, it's four, one, zero. That's fine.
But I'm qualifying my vote that you need to inform the other parties developing other proposals very soon of this decision tonight.
Absolutely.
One of which I'm married to.
Right, well--
So there's the headline for you tomorrow, Dan.
So you're, I'm supporting the process, because I think we need to--
Standable, very understanding, but we only have the burden in hand, and I believe those proposals have a place in the town, Sophie. So absolutely happy to do it. Thank you all. I know it's difficult, but--
The big upset tonight, the reveal.
If you would, Audra, all you need to do is authorize Bill to let us know when to start this ASAP, please.
Yes.
But with that, I want to take a little break, and poor Deborah's been sitting here for three hours, but we'll talk about the agenda item. Matt and I have some suggestions about the agenda item and its focus, just to be clear.
You're fanning yourself.
We'll wait for Mark to return if it's okay with you.
Bob's saying he's freezing.
Okay, you guys are still, we're still--
Bob's not going through menopause.
So--
So what?
I don't know. I just wanted them--
The brace, yeah.
How do I--
That it answered those questions.
It's a huge, my mind, as being this director of MIDC, I would be asking a lot of questions about business plan versus the feasibility study is not a business plan. It's, are we going to build a house or warehouse on this lot? You know, it's a feasibility look at something. And but in parallel with that, Matt has been extremely involved as director for many months. And I haven't had the opportunity to sit down with Matt and pick his brain on some of the things that have gone on, because I know the guy knows a lot about this stuff. And I want to avail myself of that with you, Matt, and in parallel with what we're talking about here, including the feasibility study.
Sure.
I think that's important. But I thought it also important, well, I think if there are questions, I certainly, you know, I have questions on some of the numbers in there, but I agree with Deborah. This is not, it could be off by $500,000, in my opinion, but it's not going to change the feasibility analysis of what that study is saying, is basically saying, this is a feasible option for the towns to pursue through MIDC, or I should say, the coalition.
Right.
The question I have, and Deb, I'm really delighted to meet you finally, because I've heard so much about you. So it's a treat to have you here today. But I would also like to understand the state of play, because I listen to the radio and I read the news, and I know there's a new main, there's a new state agency that has been tasked with providing broadband everywhere. And there was a former agency that now is finding itself with virtually no budget and no purpose, being superseded by this new agency. How does that change the game for MIT goes, for this Internet Coalition and having a nonprofit doing that? How are, how are the current private sector providers responding also to, you know, I, you know, to, to the wide demand for broadband? And are they actually saying, we're going to equip everyone everywhere? So I, and I don't have this understanding and this knowledge. And for me, to understand whether, based on this feasibility study, the project is viable, which is something different, once the competitive market changes, and it seems to be changing right now, is also quite important to me.
Absolutely. And that was going to be my next comment.
In that regard, I've had enough discussions with Deborah already. There are, as we speak, some mega changes going on that Deborah and we have to wrestle with ASAP. And to Deborah, that's why I thought it would be smartest for us to give a current status of the MIDC and the challenges it's seeing in terms of some of the things Sophie's talking about.
So, so I think that my next comment to your point, Sophie, is going to be that the feasibility study is based on certain assumptions, right? But we have to keep in mind that the market is constantly changing. And whatever is happening in the marketplace is something that we have to be prepared to respond to and pivot on, you know, on a dime. And as Matt can attest to the fact that we have pivoted many times up until this point in time. And we're going to be pivoting, no doubt, again, in the future. What we have been doing has raised some, has raised the attention of certain incumbents who, incumbent providers who have certainly approached us about, about plans that they would like to, to pursue in our respective areas in the MIDC. And we have not yet, you know, we don't know those details yet. And so obviously can't talk about, about that at this point. But it's, it's a constantly changing scenario. With respect to your first part of your question, the, the main connectivity authority, which is the newer entity, and the ConnectMaine is the kind of outgoing entity, those are entities that are receiving the federal monies and so forth, and they're the ones that make the grants. They're not the ones that are actually going to provide services to towns. And so they are the ones that, you know, that, they control that funding. But, and we obviously work with them. But they are not going to be the ones who are going to actually go out and do last mile connections to hook people up to broadband. So it's a cooperative thing.
And about the private sector, about, you know, like Spectrum and?
That's the incumbents that I was referring to, that, that there are, there are maneuverings going on as we speak. And, and in fact, conference calls tomorrow taking place to hear more about some of those things.
I think fundamentally, Deborah, it's fair to say that what MIDC, you all, Matt was involved too, have been, have done a great thing to raise the attention of some of these suppliers to the point where they're starting to respond.
Yeah.
And he, I mean,
And that's, that's a huge dynamic.
It is a huge dynamic. It's a huge dynamic to say, okay, look at these towns are serious. And they voted at the polls that they're serious about bringing broadband in. And when you have incumbents who really didn't care about talking to you before, and now all of a sudden, there's pressure there, it's, there's pressure because of the pressure that's been, you know, that's been exercised thus far to get us where we are. But where that puts us and where it puts viability going forward, or what kind of pivoting has to be done, is all very, you know, up for discussion.
Mark?
I was going to say, one of the early meetings before, when it was just the Midcoast Internet Coalition, one of those providers came to one of the meetings. And I asked specifically, are you interested in providing fiber to every premise? And they said, oh, no, we can't do that. We're only interested in providing where they will make money. I'm paraphrasing what, they didn't say it that way, but that's what they meant.
Right.
So the really important thing here is, we need to get fiber to every premise. And that's always been the goal. And we're the only ones that are going to be able to do that.
So I don't know that.
Yeah, right.
No, I'm sorry. I don't know, because
No, that's why.
So for me, you're right, that it's, it's equal access, it's fairness in pricing, because making sure that everybody has it doesn't mean that everybody can afford it. So there's a lot of other subsequent issues that I will be looking.
Sure. We have to, because remember, the fundamental function of Camden or Rockport or others, we, the feasibility study did address each town and what it could do on its own, if it wanted to go on its own. Some towns was feasible, others not. Camden is feasible to do on its own. It's another model that can be pursued. But the, the interesting note is, and can't discuss a lot of details over this point, is the, the competition is not stagnant. They are not necessarily, they're going to, they're going to move. The good news is, I think MIDC has raised an awareness of what Mark just stated about supplying to everyone, you know, versus where it's dense enough to make a return, which is the boon and bane of a, of a for-profit company. So these are all things that are very much on the table with MIDC. It's moving quickly. And I think there'll be a lot that will be forthcoming very quickly.
And, and Mark and Sophie, but all of those factors that you ticked off are all part of the principles, the guiding principles, right? Camden Select Board, as well as the other four town, or the other three towns that are involved, all signed off on those guiding, guiding principles, which is universal access, it's affordable access, it's, you know, a minimum of 100 symmetrical with, you know, opportunity for gig symmetrical. All of those things are, and so that's what guides the MIDC, obviously.
You know, the timing of this meeting is about 16 hours off.
Yeah.
Because there's going to be some information gathered tomorrow, which we're not, at this point, don't want to discuss in public. But it's, it's very significant.
I have one more question for Deb. Do you miss these nightly meetings like this?
Not really.
Now that you've given them up?
This brought it all back, though.
Solid waste.
Yes.
She is there. And, and what they've done, and again, including the past, not me, and Matt, and Denise, and Greg, and Ben, and Deborah, was phenomenal, phenomenal amount of work in a very short time period. And it's gotten the attention of the market. And that's a good news thing. It hasn't gotten the attention of some of the people we might want in Knox County and other places, but no comment, right, Matt?
That's right.
But any, again, I, Matt, I, you really need to get with you at some point when you're having five minutes out of your busy life, because there's a bunch of things to discuss, not the least of which is the past, but also what's going on now. Deborah, thank you so much for being here.
Okay, thanks.
I appreciate it.
Nice to see you all. Nice to meet you.
Say hi to Bob.
Me too.
With that, we'll move on to our reports from Ms. Kayler.
Yes. So to go back to the tannery.
Yep.
I wanted to give an update on the cleanup grant. Yeah, the cleanup grant and the status of that. And we're, I'm going to be bringing you some difficult decisions to make around that pretty soon. So
Oh, fun.
Yeah. So Ransom's ready to move forward on the cleanup requirements, which is the ABCA and the Community Relations Plan. But the issue that we're facing now is that when the grant was originally prepared, we were looking at a $40,000 match to do the sort of cap cover, yes, the town, to the $200,000 grant, to do the cap cover system and the, I think, I think at the time, that was sort of all that was anticipated that would be required for the site. With a combination of, you know, everything we know about costs increasing, and what we know now about the need for additional soil removal, we're looking at a match closer to $155,000.
How much, $165,000?
$155,000 from the town. So given that we only have $40,000 that was anticipated as matched to the grant, Ransom's holding off for now, based on the lack of, you know, cost share funds available to close out the grant and, you know, do the whole certificate of completion when we come to that actual point where we're, you know, doing the site remediation. But because we're incredibly limited on time, we need to make a decision about what we're going to do with the cleanup grant in general. So in the meantime, Jeremy reached out to our project officer from the EPA to look at, is there any additional grant funds available in our region? Because, you know, we're part of the New England Region One, and sometimes when funds go unallocated or unspent, they'll shift them around to other projects like this.
I see.
Unfortunately, they don't have anything available. Their timeframe for finding out if they get additional funds is the spring. They've asked about the possibility of the town being eligible for infrastructure funding that was passed as part of the, yeah, Build Back Better bill.
Build Better.
Yeah.
Build Back Better. So they, they don't have an answer for us at this point as to whether or not, you know, what they're going to get, could they apply some of that funding towards this project? But they are going to look into it. So in the meantime, Ransom's going to put together some options for how to best use the remaining cleanup funds for the town to consider. And they're going to focus on, you know, what could potentially be considered an impediment, an impediment by a developer to developing the site. You know, also to kind of back to your discussion about moving forward with, you know, choosing what you're going to present to voters in terms of, you know, how the, the site's going to be redeveloped. I mean, that does give a little bit more, you know, more of something to sort of work with Ransom and the EPA on.
Sure.
So, you know, we'll, we'll bring those sort of options to you based on what, you know, Ransom feels like can be done with the remainder of the funds. But, you know, it's going to sort of come down to one of those options, which may not be what we originally anticipated. I don't think relying on additional federal funds to materialize is a safe or wise bet. You know, and we can certainly close out the grant and give back the remaining funds that we have. So that's another possibility as well. That's probably the least appealing possibility for everybody involved, including the EPA, because they would really like to see
Cleaned up.
the site remediated to a point where it can be redeveloped and reused.
Is, is in total, the net challenge to the budget, a difference between 155 and 40?
I'd say it's a little more complicated than that, because in that 40, we had, we had said a lot of it would be in-kind contributions from the town, because this grant does allow us to
I see.
count staff time.
So the challenge is 155K, period?
Yes.
To the town's budget, or whatever you deal with and have to deal with.
Yes.
Okay. So in short, you're investigating avenues, but I agree with you. I think that avenues are probably limited. There is, though, in what you said, I heard, and it's true, the possibility of mitigating costs based on how the site's going to be used.
Yes. Yes.
Allison?
So the idea that we can now go back to the idea of coordinating with a developer on these EPA funds
No, I wouldn't do that.
is a little bit crazy to me.
I wouldn't do that. I wouldn't do that.
Because we're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not, we're not going to get there.
I think the very best thing we could do is to try to use the funds for things that we know the town is going to be responsible for
Correct.
forever. Not, and to move away from the idea that we can use the funds to make the site more developable. Because that hasn't been working for us.
Unfortunately, though, the way the grant is structured and what the EPA looks for is, is what you can do to make the site ready for, they don't really care about what the town's in perpetuity obligation is. They want the site
Okay, but
redeveloped and reused.
There are things that it, the argument could easily be made, that the Riverwalk falling into the river, because it was built on a heap of trash that is maybe hazardous, is something that could be, it's definitely a drawback for housing there. It's a drawback for all kinds of things. So I'm really confused about why the cost is so much higher, because what we've consistently heard from Steve Dyer is that really very little needs to be done, and that there's only little slightly elevated areas of, you know, a little extra arsenic here and there. The last time he was here, he said that everything that was being proposed as part of this was part, was the part of that 2016 Phase Two, whatever they call that, Phase Two, what is that?
Assessment, yeah.
Yeah. So where, I mean, what are they proposing to, to do? I mean, the last time he was here, he had no idea what, where any soil was going to be removed, how
Well, and I asked the same question.
I mean, we're trying to, along the Riverwalk, for example, there's, there's stuff that is, that according to him, there's some soil that might be removed. Well, that's also very close to the area where we're proposing to maybe put a new bridge. What I'm worried is going to happen is we're going to go to put in a bridge, and we're going to discover
Stuff.
solid waste, or whatever else. There's that retaining wall that's falling apart, which I would argue is kind of part of the bridge in some sort of way.
Argue to MDOT, too.
It really is. It provides some bank support for the abutments.
It does.
But trying to, to get that part of it dealt with, because last time, they said, oh, there's nothing hazardous that needs to be removed. There's no, no solid waste, nothing along the river, along the riverbank. But then luckily, Jeremy was able to find some extra assessment abilities, and we assessed it. And now it does need to be removed. So could we just try to, I mean, there's stuff that's sticking out that we can see is bad. Can we, if, I feel that if we were to tell Ransom and the EPA that their, the priority is dealing with this stuff that looks really bad and seems to be hazardous, and that that is a barrier to any kind of development, that we could, rather than trying, everything I've heard before is like, we're going to sprinkle a little bit more dirt on top of this dirt that already isn't so bad over here where it's grassy.
But I thought the site has defined what needs to be done to make it developable by EPA, by EPA, no?
Yeah, yes. And I mean, we've, we've tried with the riverbank, and
Well, I understand that, but, but getting into, this is bureaucracy, frankly.
It's, no, it's, some of it's us. It's not just
Well, I, I don't know. If the EPA has agreed that, I'm guessing that this work and this boundary must be done to make it, quote, "developable," and it's going to cost this much money, isn't that what we're focusing on or not?
It all depends on the use.
They, they, they want us to focus on the area
Correct.
that, that is going to be redeveloped for whatever use the town, you know, defines.
That's a physical line on the map.
Then why are they going to let us excavate soil in the form of VRAP, in the previously identified VRAP area? Because that's what is being proposed now. So that's, in the Riverwalk, that's, that, that defies everything that was just said. It's just been so inconsistent.
I would say, I mean, we've asked this question a lot of times of the, like, directly of the EPA project officer. And he's been very clear, our first priority is the cap and cover system on the site, and then the Riverwalk, and then if you had money, the riverbank. He's told us that over and over again.
I've never seen any correspondence that really outlines that. Cap and cover
I put it in your packet, because I knew you were going to ask the question.
It depends what we're, it depends what we're saying we're going to do. A lot of the work that's being proposed now is in the VRAP area. That is mind-boggling to me. Because that's the certified, VRAP is like, that's the certified area that was like, this is all perfect and ready to go. And now we're going to take these funds, and we're going to go back in to dig into that area. So why is EPA going to let us do that? But they're not going to let us?
I don't know. And I don't think we're going to answer those questions here. But I, I guess what we're trying to just get to is, you know, clearly, what is the next step? We, we're short 150, as far as we know right now, we're short $155,000 to do what we think they told us to do, right? So we have a couple, we have a couple of options in that regard. In parallel with that, we can certainly invest, because this is, this is a head-on-tail thing. We have to clean up the site so the developer, if there is a developer approved by the town, will take the site over, whether that's in September, November, or next February. I don't know.
Well, and also, I mean, the, the degree to which you clean up the site depends on what the future use is going to be.
It can.
So for the portion of the site that's going to be
Me a park.
public open space
Just telling that.
that's a pretty high level of cleanup.
No, it's actually not.
Yes, it is. The first, the highest level of cleanup is residential, then it's public open space, and then it's commercial uses after that. So
Depends whether there's a building or not.
Well, again, what
Sure. But, I mean, I'm just saying that, you know, the fact that, that's an, that's sort of another thing that makes it a little bit easier to remediate the site, is if you're moving forward with the Cranesport proposal, there's a little bit less that needs to be done than if you were going to redevelop the site for housing.
Is there time to, we, we had a discussion about going and have a cleanup, no developer, nothing. Is there time to have this decision to try to move forward with Cranesport insert into the process with EPA?
No.
That's what I thought.
No.
So why are we, so why are we discussing it? We shouldn't.
Yeah. I mean, well, I'm just, I'm just saying, like
It's either factor it isn't. I'm having a hard time keeping, having these two conflicting narratives in my head.
Okay. I'd say that because of timing, it is not a factor. You can't consider it a factor now. But we can't just say, this is the town's priority, we want to spend the money on this, and the EPA is going to allow it. I'm just, I'm, I'm not saying that there isn't the ability to
You're talking about beyond the boundary, the basic boundary, which I believe excludes the, the riverfront.
It doesn't really, though, because they just
I'm, I'm saying, like, I know Allison wants to clean up the riverbank.
Right.
I think there is very little chance that the EPA is going to say, okay,
It's not what I'm saying, Audra.
Just clean up the riverbank.
That isn't, that isn't, no, you've really misunderstood me. The current, Steve Dyer said here that part of his plan is to excavate soil on the Riverwalk.
So what I'm saying is
In the VRAP area.
Yeah. What I'm saying, I don't, I don't know, because I haven't, I haven't seen what I mean, what his plan is.
Can we see, as soon as we can see some of this written, I'm hearing that there's a lot of, there's a lot of, like, we're going to have to make some hard, fast decisions at some point. But it seems like there's a lot of discussion that's already happening somewhere. There's, there are things that are known. And if more of that, like, when is that going to be available so that we can?
I mean, I can't even answer these questions, so I don't even know. All I know is I've been told
Jeremy has his hand up in here. I don't know if anybody wants to. I'm just letting you know.
Well, we can. It's just that I, I'm starting to get into weeds here. And I'm just trying to understand, usually in these situations, EPA has a site that's defined by lines on a boundary map. And in that site, they want you to do A, B, C, D, E, period. And that's going to cost so much money. It's really that simple. I'm sorry, that's
It's just drastically
Well, I'm sorry. Well, I'm sorry. That's what the EPA does with brownfield sites. Now, if that's, I'm trying, I'm wrestling too with what they, I don't know what they're asking us to do in that boundary. But it's going to cost so much money to do whatever they want us to do.
Right. I guess what I'm just, I'm just trying to say, whatever, what we originally kind of thought we were going to be able to cover with the funds available, we can't.
Yeah.
So, yeah.
So just a warning, there's no decision we can make today.
No, 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 we can't.
The forecast is, is off, at the window, and now we have to wait for more
Well, we have to focus on where we come up with $150,000, $160,000.
Or give the money back. Because at this point, that's some really expensive money.
Yeah. I tell you, from my experience, that's not a good thing to do.
No.
Just get some clear things. My, when we started this whole thing, that we weren't supposed to touch the VRAP area.
Yeah.
Because that was already done.
Right.
That is a fact that has changed based on new information, which I'm thrilled with. But the last time, when Steve Dyer was here, he said, we might have hazardous waste that was going to have to get shipped to a secure landfill, which is very, very different than what we were told at the beginning of this. I'm actually glad to hear that that can be considered, but it's just really confusing. And it seems like if we have some role in making a decision.
So I think we have to wait until Ransom comes back to us with proposals, right?
He must have come back to us with something.
That's what they're, that's what Audra said, that they're going to be working on, making a proposals of what we can do with the budget that we have, knowing that we're short that $150,000, $160,000. At this stage, that's the only thing we can do is wait for them. Then we can discuss it.
Yeah, there's just a history here.
Because we don't have, we don't have a basis for discussion tonight.
Sure. The only reason we tested the riverbank is because for four years, I fast and fumed about it, and was told millions of times that I was a crazy person, that it was all fine. And then eventually, we were able to test it, and then it came back as some of the most contaminated part, contaminated part of the whole site. So the history of this for me hasn't been that if I just be quiet, it just all gets worked out. So
I understand.
How long do you think it's going to take to have this information?
No idea.
All right. Keep us posted. This is all about, and I think it's a good idea that we had talked about this as
Right. Well, and Matt asked for an update. I thought that it was, it was a good thing to do.
I really appreciate that. It's nice to have it.
Matt was bringing it up, and I did. I think this, this is a parallel effort with what we're talking about on Cranesport, of course, but, but obviously significant, because it could, things could take longer than we think they could take. And then we, so we
Well, and also, that's, we, we do have a time
Yes.
We do have a time constraint.
Yes.
And if we can't
Yes.
do it by the time the grant needs to end, we're going to lose the money anyway. So it's, it might end up being a moot point. We might get the money taken away from us by the EPA.
Well, that's very true. Alternatively, I can't, find it hard to believe we can't find 160K.
Yeah.
It's all about what you want to spend money on.
Jeremy, Mark still have his hand up?
Doug, Jeremy has, he doesn't
I can't perforate them. I'm
Well, he doesn't have his hand up anymore. Do you want me to read his comment? He wrote a comment.
Go ahead, go ahead.
He said, that is correct at one point. I assume that's when I was speaking. Just kidding. Probably, um, then, that was at 8:34. Then 8:39, he said, cost estimates were provided for all RFP proposals, and the new estimate is consistent with all proposals that were looked at. The grant is now five years old. Cost of increased, cost of increase. The targeted brownfield assessment, which, thank you, Jeremy, for making that happen, found new contamination. So that's great that we know about that. But we are looking at options within the budget. And then he says, not correct at the end.
All right.
I don't know if anyone else spoke.
Yes. Let's, Audra, we just
All right, okay.
We just need frequent updates on
Yes. Parking management study. I just wanted to remind everyone, the public meeting to discuss the recommendations of the study is going to be on the 25th at 5:30, and it'll be at the Camden-Rockport Middle School.
Oh, that's wonderful.
Will you send us an email about that?
Yes, it's on, it's on the website in the town calendar.
What time is it?
Please all look there, because if you're not looking there, no one else is going to.
Well, Audra, one of the main things what we wanted with that calendar was for the ability to subscribe to it, to have like any
I know.
Google, that's all, that was my only thing
I know, but I'm just saying, I'm just saying.
Calendar that you could be subscribed to, like for school.
Okay. I'm just saying, it would be very nice if all of you checked it.
What time?
Okay. So Morning, when we get up, or?
Sure, whenever you want to. So
Time is the meeting?
5:30 PM.
Yes, 5:30 PM.
5:30 PM, Middle School, January 25th.
I got that. All right.
All right. So the MDOT Main Street Pedestrian and Drainage Project. So the tip-down that's in front of French and Braun has been a problem since, since it was installed. They did a temporary fix to it with a bunch of asphalt this winter, which is
That looks ugly.
It looks horrible, but it's just to keep people from tripping. MDOT basically proposed a fix that would be that but concrete to Dave St. Laurent and I, and said, our management has said that this is, this is what we're doing. And if you want to do anything differently, it's going to have to be a cost share. Dave had an alternative that everyone thinks is going to work in terms of the grade. It's not going to be exactly ADA compliant, but it's the very closest that we can possibly get. And quite honestly, that isn't ADA compliant either.
It's not.
And it's not going to create more of a drainage issue.
Yep.
So we do have, we're going to look at an alternative design, but it's likely it's going to have to be a cost share, because they're, they're digging in their heels in terms of what they will and won't pay for there. So just want to give you a heads up again on another, another thing that we're going to have to
That's a fun one.
Yes. Yep. Yes, yep. And so online remote services, so there's a number, there's several online applications that the town is in the process of setting up and implementing. So there's the Ecode 360. So Janice is the point person on this, and that puts the town's charter as well of all of our ordinances online in a format that's much easier to search through and find everything. So that's happening. We've had a real, it's just been a real not fun process trying to find an online licensing and permitting system. I think we're finally going to settle on the iWork system, so that will allow, you know, all licenses and permits to be submitted through an online portal, so applicants can track this, and the public can view anything once it's been approved. We're trying to get it so it's map based and property based, so you can click on a property, and all of the permits associated with it, licenses associated with it pop up, as well as the property card and all that information that we currently have. But that's just, it's just finding something that does everything that we need it to do, and not having to sit through like two hour sales demos has been like really a challenge. And then the last one is TextMyGov, so it's a text alert system that all residents, you know, businesses, people who work in Camden can sign up for. So it'll send out alerts and notifications, they can report issues, they can get information because it pulls that information directly off our website, or it directs people to our website if they have questions. And they get automatic answers to them as well as if that's information that's, that's on our website. So those are three things that we're working on now. It, it sounds pretty simple, but it's pretty time consuming to get them all set up and going.
Oh, thank you, Audra. Select Board, Mr. Ratner.
Ah ha, I have three things. Number one, the, got a, got an email from Dave Morrison, the director of the Opera House, about the year that they've had, and I'm just going to quote some of the things. Thirty-three sound check performances, nine with no audience, paid $10,900 to main artists, and ended up in the black netting $1,062. The community arts fund, which has supported all of these shows, ended up with a December balance of $16,000 and change. This is from donations and sound check ticket revenue. The federal shuttered venue operators grant awarded us an initial payment of $65,000 and change, and a supplemental award of another $25,000. Using those funds to do more promotion, advertising, pay artists, do building and equipment improvements, one of which is, we have a new three camera video system that we can use for streaming, which is terrific in the venue, and buy a ticket printer and much more. So they've been really working hard, and they've done a lot of building, painting and, in, in, painting and repair issues as well. They've had some big shows and with some great revenue coming in. And, but the, the good thing is, is there, in 2022, there are a lot of great sound check shows, which are usually Friday nights booked through the summer. So Winterfest concert for 2:10, there's a bunch of multimedia stuff, some international people, some folk stuff, Jazz in June featuring the Brubeck Brothers, Dave Brubeck's son's quartet, in, in, when's that, June 17th. Summer Sounds, four free outdoor concerts at the Snowball, Sundays in August. And Johnny A, his great guitar player, is booked for Windgemmer Festival. So lots going on there, so the Opera House is doing great. Number two, Allison was correct when she insisted for years, and I remember very clearly that there was pollution at the river's edge. But knowing that, knowing that you're correct, I don't know that that means that you're maybe not a crazy person anyway, but just wanted to mention that. And number three, sorry, couldn't resist, it's just.
That's okay.
You give me those opportunities, and I just can't let it.
You're good at recognizing.
I can't let it go. And number three, we accepted the challenge to do the toboggan run at the Snowball again this year, and Matt said that he's in last, last meeting.
No, he didn't.
Didn't you say you were in? You were on the sled?
Oh, no, yeah, maybe. I get that as a maybe.
We, we need you, Matt. So I need to, I need to ask, I'm in the sled again. Audra's been there for the last bunch of years, our three winning years in a row, Audra's been the, the fourth person, and, but she's not able to do it this year. So I'm asking Sophie and Bob if they're interested.
I think Allison always loves doing it.
And Allison?
I think Allison and Sophie, we always like the female contingent thing and two males.
I have an, I have one female alternative already. I'm just curious, are you interested?
I'll do it if you do it. I'm, I'm not, I'm not doing it if you don't do it.
I've done it in the past.
She has. She's been the only person, and Mark, who've been consistently on every race, then we'd beat the hell out of Rockport.
I mean, if you're in.
You did it the last time.
I know, I'm not so sure.
No, because Jody, Jody stepped in, and Audra.
I'll do it. We'll do it.
So, so, Matt, are you okay with that?
Matt's probably going to say that.
You find okay, Bob. In other words, is this a, this, or is it?
So we actually have. Another municipality joining the competition.
Matt Siegel, Sophie, Mark, and Allison.
This would be the first time we've ever had four actual select board members to do it, which is great.
Right, this is the first time.
It's going to be a very open election with four.
Oh, no problem. And Audra and I will be coaches.
Yeah, and I can tell you.
Everybody should wear a helmet. The town won't force you to, which I think is a mistake.
Everybody will be wearing helmets.
Ten seconds of pure terror, but it's, it's really fun.
It's always nice when we get to Rockport, not that they were beaten.
Yeah, luckily, luckily, Hasmer Pond is really well frozen, so we will go sliding across. And, okay, so we've.
February 7th.
Seventeen?
7th. I'm not sure, it's in February.
It's, it's one of the first two, it's either the 5th or the 12th.
Yeah, the first full weekend, yeah, the first, yeah, you're right. I think it's like February 7th.
Okay, I was just nervous it was like tomorrow or something, because you said the Hasmer Pond is really frozen.
It's always rough.
It's frozen, people were on the.
Oh, I know, it just doesn't mean it's going to be frozen.
And Sophie, Allison, and myself.
Correct, and two coaches.
And Mark, teasing aside, it does depend on dates, so again, once we get some dates, I can let you know if I can participate, okay, in terms of work.
Mark, we've got a helmet decoration for you. It's a ham hock that fits over a helmet.
There you go, there you go. Onto select board reports. Mr. Siegel, do you have anything you'd like to add?
Not so much a report, I just thank Audra for, again, there's been a lot of, in terms of masking, lots of people requesting, just that we make sure that we do our best to protect the health and safety of our staff and of our community. So again, working with Audra, talking with Audra, that we have made some improvements and some upgrades, and again, appreciate all those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. Ms. Romano.
Yes, so I've been busy with committees. We've had a really good harbor committee meeting, and we started to discuss steamboat landing, and it's been very instructive. So the conversations are going well here, and we're trying to make sure that usage is good for the greater public, and is this a shared space, and, so it's interesting. The second committee I attended was this afternoon. I attended my first cemetery association committee, and very interesting as well, with a lot of interesting projects to maintain the cemeteries, make them look good, keep them in good shape. And again, for me, very interesting, because it's a lot of history for, from Camden. And I had a third point that I wanted to share with everyone, as of today, everybody can order free COVID-at-home tests from the government.
Yep.
And it's a good precaution to have, have a couple of them. I would, I just order them.
I already have mine.
Yep, so it works, it's free, you just go online, it's a government COVID, it's, if you Google government COVID test, it'll take you there.
Yep, great, thank you. Thank you, Sophie. Ms. McKeller.
Okay, uh-oh, it's going to make me put in a password here.
You're doing that, I'm going to run up.
Enter your password to allow this.
Go ahead.
Keep going.
Keep going, what do you? Okay, oh, well, hold on.
We're holding.
I'm going to mirror my display here. I want Mark to see this, Mark likes this kind of stuff.
I can see it.
I'm seeing it, you're good.
No, no, Mark.
Mark.
Mark just left for a second, you might not have been able to see that.
I think he did, I think he did on purpose.
I'm trying to decide.
About?
About whether he did it on purpose or not.
No, of course not.
Okay.
Wow, nice picture.
So, well.
Yeah, I saw those pictures online.
Yeah, I did too.
So this is like, just one of those things that you can easily miss if you're not paying attention. Monday was, you know, the predicted tide was 10.3 feet.
Which is not that high.
No, 10.3 feet, that's, that's like not even worth going down there to check, in my mind, that's way off. Usually like.
Over 11.
11.9, 12 is where you might start to see a little overtopping in Harbor Park, but the wind was blowing from the southeast.
Mm-hmm, surge.
And so. And now this here is, you know, one of the piers in the harbor. This is like, last time, we were congratulating the Reeds on this great project of the American Boathouse, and can kind of see like what, you know, the collective, this, this part here of the seawall was just redone also as part of the Reeds project. And this is all the town sort of putting rules out there and working with a developer, and like this big, a lot of planning went into this. And, you know, this is, this is the result here of us like planning a lot. And so when we look at like the priorities of what we're doing, it's kind of shocking like how bad things are, because we've been saying for, you know, ever since I got on the select board, and certainly before that too, that we need to update our ordinances for sea level rise, yet it's not happening. And projects continue to go forward, and then so often, we end up saying, oh, well, you know, the applicant was willing to make modifications, but our ordinance won't allow, the big thing that's, you know, coming up right now, our ordinance won't allow peers to be higher than a certain level. That was done.
Above, above the tide.
Right, like there, you know, there's an elevation limit, and so, and that was done, I went and I spoke with my father-in-law, who's involved actually, in a lot of the piers that are in the harbor on the other side of things than I would have been on, but that is for aesthetic reasons mostly, or has been. And so, but you can see like, this kind of stuff can get really dangerous if you're, get trapped underneath it, this is also, you know, these are just the town floats, but it kind of speaks to the need to, to do some major updating. This is from above these benches here, and you can see, you know, the water gets back behind even this embankment here. And so if this had been at a 12-foot high tide, you know, plus this storm surge, it's just, does a huge amount of damage.
It just needed to be two days later when the full moon was in, right? The full moon would have, would have brought you the extra two feet.
Well, it was actually a little bit earlier in the month that our, that our high astronomical tides were. But, yeah, we just, we just miss it by a little bit. This shows, kind of this, you know, should sort of help everybody understand a little bit, the connection between the dam and this lower Harbor Park area. This over here is really the original path of the river, and it's been filled in. And so it all, the dam all connects into here, and so when this part gets overtopped, it's also compromising the dam in many ways. And so initially, when we started looking at options for the dam, we said, oh, gosh, well, we don't, you know, we don't want to touch Harbor Park, because we think that'll just be okay for a little longer, and the seawall should be fine for, you know, hopefully longer. So we, we were kind of thinking, let's just look at this part over here, and maybe full dam removal wouldn't be an option. But then when you realize that all of this is already very compromised by sea level rise, it's just, very, would be very silly or sort of impossible to look at those two things separately. Then moving to Bayview Street, which is another area that we began filling right away when the original settlers arrived. This is the old Lock Marina.
The Condam.
And, you know, this, we have catch basins here, and we also have a stream, the, the one that goes behind like Lime Rock Street, Jake, comes out of the Quarry Hill system, and then goes underneath Belmont Brook. That all goes underground on Frye Street, and goes underneath here and outlets here. So we have this drainage easement that's an entire stream that has to come down through here, and when, when the ocean comes up that much, you start to see the catch basins on Bayview Street popping up. This is over by the Yacht Club, and this actually got like really scary. Usually I can sort of predict things, but this was, this was, this was scary. This is, let's see. Yacht Club, of course, a lot of that is just infilled, inner tidal zone also, but this is when, you know, when the wind blows from the southeast, it really makes a tremendous difference. Then here was, this is the most flooded I've personally seen, but I really only started paying attention recently.
You just revealed a parking lot.
Yeah, I mean.
Ugh.
It's.
Impressing.
Really. This is one of those issues that, you know, we've been talking about for a while. We've had special town meetings where we've had citizens vote on wanting the town to implement the recommendations of the main climate council. We've had every indication that the town, people in the town, the majority of them want us to do something, yet we continue to say, oh, well, we're going to let projects go forward, big projects where lots of money is being spent developing, or improving, or changing things around the harbor, but we haven't had time to update any of our ordinances. I think the Yacht Club is a, is a place where we really need to have a serious conversation about what actually is the best thing to do, and to just pretend that we can continue business as usual is, is, we're just setting a really bad example for everyone. This is just a, this actually came from the Public Works Director. It is not, I, I didn't actually see this, which I, I'm sorry that I missed it, but I'm glad Dave captured it. There was some rain too, and that caused some problems. This is the parking lot that comes down, it's sort of behind the, across the street from the Knox Mill. This is Free Street up here, you'll probably see here. So this is.
What's water?
A brook that comes down behind Pearl Street, failing to make its way underground. It's one of the many buried streams we have in town.
And so if it.
Just, you know, there are water problems all over the place, from years and years and years of squeezing water and putting water where it wasn't designed to go, and there's also, you see the, the tank there?
Yeah.
It's like, what, what process allowed, this is, it's waste oil, it's not, it's not like heating fuel, but it's, it was the oil like from kitchens and stuff. So just, you know, just a series of.
Disaster waiting to happen.
You know, this is a private parking lot, but we have public drainage that comes down through it. So anyway, that is my report.
Thank you, Allison. Oh, you don't have to.